Good evening and welcome to our Tuesday, August 19th Regular School Board Meeting. The time is now 6:00 PM. The School Board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge that we are residing on the traditional land of the Denae people. Our mission, as a community, we create supportive learning environments where all students thrive. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Richardson, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Charlie is excused and Mr. Wade will join later on Zoom. Colonel Campbell?
Present.
Colonel Foster?
Here.
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Ms. Duleen?
Here.
Ms. Maple?
Here.
Mrs. Hardy is excused. Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Thank you. The Board has a quorum.
Thank you. Up is our School Board Fort Wainwright Representative Introduction. The School Board would like to welcome Colonel John Campbell, the Board's new Fort Wainwright Garrison Commander and School Board Representative, replacing Colonel Jason Cole. Colonel John Campbell commissioned as an Infantry Officer upon graduating from the United States Military Academy at West Point in 2003. His command and leadership assignments include Platoon Leader and Company Executive Officer, 1st Battalion, 501st Parachute Infantry Regiment, Joint Base Elmendorf Richardson, Alaska, Platoon Leader and Company Executive Officer, Attack Company, 2nd Ranger Battalion Company Commander, 1st Battalion, 18th Infantry Regiment, Headquarters and Headquarters Company Commander and Battalion S3, 1st Battalion 63rd Armor Regiment, 2nd Heavy Brigade Combat Team, Fort Riley, Kansas Squadron, S3 and Executive Officer, 5th Squadron, 1st Cavalry Regiment, 1st Striker Brigade Combat Team, Fort Wainwright, Alaska Infantry Branch Assignment Officer, US Army Human Resources Command, Fort Knox, Kentucky, Joint Planner, US Navy 3rd Fleet Headquarters, Indo-PACOM, I apologize, and Squadron Commander, 1st Squadron Airborne, 40th Cavalry Regiment, 2nd Infantry Brigade Combat Team Airborne, 11th Airborne Division, Jay Bear, Alaska. His most recent assignments include Senior Airborne Light Infantry Trainer, Tarantula Team, and subsequently G3 National Training Center for Erwin, California. Colonel Campbell has deployed for a total of 46 months in support of operations in Afghanistan and Iraq. He holds a Master of Business Administration and is a graduate of the US Army War College. His military education includes the US Army Ranger School, Jump Master Course, Cavalry Leaders Course, and Joint Professional Military Education II. His awards and decorations include the Bronze Star Medal, Meritorious Service Medal, Joint Commendation Medal, Army Commendation Medal, Air Force Commendation Medal, Navy and Marine Corps Commendation Medal, Army Achievement Medal, Combat Infantry Badge, Expert Infantryman Badge, and the Senior Parachutist Badge. Colonel Campbell is married to Abby and they have one son Wyatt, who is an avid hockey player, and I love that. Welcome Colonel Campbell to the Board.
Thank you so much and great job on that. It took me back a minute, so thank you.
There's a lot of hard words. Moving on, we'll move on to the adoption of the Agenda with Consent Items. Consent Agenda items marked with an asterisk are considered routine items not requiring public discussion by the School Board. Unless removed from the Consent Agenda, asterisk items will be automatically approved when the Agenda is adopted. Questions concerning these items should be directed to the Administration before the meeting. If the Superintendent or a member of the public wishes to have an item removed from the Consent Agenda, the request must be made to a Board Member any time prior to the start of the meeting. The Board Member has the discretion to accept or deny the request. Only a Board Member may remove an item from the Consent Agenda. If an item is removed from the Consent Agenda, it shall be considered separately as the last item of new business. Asterisk items will then be adopted by one single motion. May I have a motion to approve the Agenda with Consent Items?
Move to adopt the Agenda with Consent Items.
Second.
Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Colonel Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Duleen?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. Up next is public comments on reports and non-Agenda items, including general comments, inputs, ideas, and suggestions. During this section of the Agenda, the School Board welcomes public comments on non-Agenda topics. This is an opportunity for community members to be heard. The Board will note the topics, though no official actions will be taken. Topics may be referred to the Administration for further research and future potential action. Board Members will not respond to comments or questions made by the public. Concerned citizens should first discuss matters with the Superintendent or Designee. After the Superintendent or Designee has heard the concerns, they may be brought up to the Board. Individual students and district personnel may not be discussed in public testimony. Please contact the District Office to route concerns about individual students or district personnel through the appropriate channels. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to speak on Agenda items at the time the item is introduced for action and/or discussion. Once the Agenda is published, testifiers should email or call the School Board Office by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting to sign up for public testimony. Students who have signed up in advance will be called upon first, followed by members of the public who have signed up in advance in the order in which they have signed up. If time remains, anyone else in person will be invited to testify until the one-hour time limit has been reached. A sign-up sheet is available in the Boardroom before the start of the meeting. Speakers are limited to three minutes each and should provide their first name, spelling their last, and state their area of residence. As a reminder, we have new time clocks here in our Boardroom. The light will turn green when your time starts. When you have reached 30 seconds left in your testimony, the light will turn yellow. At the end of your three minutes, a buzzer will sound. Do we have any students in the audience who wish to testify? Seeing none, we will move on to our list. We will start with Erin Janoso. Good evening, Ms. Janoso. Good to see you. You know the drill. You have three minutes. State your name, spell your last.
My name is Erin, is it on?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Erin Janoso, J-A-N-O-S-O. And I'm from Fairbanks. And I guess I'm in a situation where I had testimony prepared today for what I thought I was going to say. But I found out really recently that a lot of that has, the situations have evolved, changed, you know, in the last, that I have found out about just in the last like hour. So I'm going to do something that I've not done before in this testimony chair and just try to tell you from what I know just off the top of my head, and I apologize ahead of time for, you know, if I'm not as organized as I could be because it's a recent information. But, and you know, please reach out if I can help with any other information afterwards. But there is, there has been, I'm here to testify on behalf of the music programs. Wait, okay.
mic, your mic, yep, there you go.
And I would like to start, I think, by remembering a time three years ago, spring three years ago, when the elementary band and orchestra programs were being cut. And a justification that was given to our students, to our parents, to the people of this district, that cutting those programs at that time would allow us to organize our resources towards our secondary programs. I sat in this room and listened to that being repeated over and over, that one of the ways that we could protect the secondary programs was by the district borrowing back allocations of FTE that went to schools and making them district FTE. And by doing so, the district would keep control over some of, they would have some control over these programs that work band, orchestra, and choir as like a pipeline. At that time, it was elementary, middle school, high school. And it was being, at that time, being cut to just middle school and high school. And there was the promise of the support that would be able to be offered to the middle school program, the secondary programs, because of the loss of the elementary programs. So that was stated and that was promised, and that was what was presented to the Board, and that is what the Board voted on. The additional FTE that was taken back by the district. And there's three situations, I'm out of time already, but like there's one at Lathrop Choir Program. There is one at Ryan Middle School Choir Program. There is not going to be choir there until the spring semester now. And then also at Barnett as a consequence of the cuts, where middle school FTE is being used for elementary general music. And there is no longer leveled classes in either of any of those situations. So I wish I had more time, but I could.
If you can email us that information, Ms. Janoso, that'd be great, thank you.
I'm sorry for the disorganization. Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate your testimony. Up next, we will have Ms. Adia Cotter. Good evening, Ms. Cotter. Good to see you. If you could state your name. If you can state your name, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. Adia Cotter, C-O-T-T-E-R, and I live in the McGrath area. I just wanted to take my time tonight to acknowledge the beginning of the school year and thank each one of you for coming back for the 25, 26 school year and coming back for quality education for all students in our district. I appreciate your time up there. I appreciate the hard work that you put in last year. I know this summer as well. And I appreciate the service that you have committed to, to ensure that all students in our district have quality education. I also want to acknowledge the behind-the-scenes people that make quality education in our town possible. You have a lot of things on your Consent Agenda every time, and those don't just get there by themselves. There are people who are accepting donations, there are people who are sending our students off to do great things in other cities. There are people that are, I'm drawing a blank, but there are a lot of people doing things on that Consent Agenda. And I think that they need to be acknowledged because I think sometimes it's forgotten that it's not only the teachers and staff that help make these schools great. I see them in the community and I always walk up and thank them in person if they're identifiable by the logo on their shirt or they're wearing a little tag, much to the horror of my teenagers who say I'm way too chatty in public. But I want them to know that they are appreciated and that they are needed to ensure that what we're doing is good public quality education and that we can provide that for every student. And I also want to thank Dr. Minor, a couple weeks ago, maybe a week ago. He sent out an email about an issue that's on the hearts and minds of our community. And I don't want to misquote him, but he sent out an email about the policy, school district policy, about visits from government officials. I appreciate the fact that he saw that as a need and he was proactive about sending out a message to put families at ease. I think that this shows the commitment of our district and our administration to making sure that our students are comfortable, that they're receiving what they need, and that families can send their kids to school knowing that they are getting what they need in school. I just want to read part of the email in case anyone listening did not get it because they don't have a child in school, or maybe they missed it. In Dr. Minor's email on the 14th, he said, "I want to assure you that our district is committed to providing a safe, welcoming, and high-quality education to every student regardless of race, color, national origin, citizenship, or immigration status." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cotter. Up next, we have Edna Johansson. Good evening, Ms. Johansson. If you could state your name, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
Sure. Edna Johansson, last name is spelled J-O-H-A-N-S-O-N.
Go ahead.
Yes, I've been a sub in the school district since 2001. And one of the biggest headaches over the last few years with classroom management has been the cellphone. Some teachers would actually allow students to have the cellphone. In other cases, I don't know, they felt students were, just didn't know where the boundary was. And as far as I go, I would go in a classroom and I would let students know that my cellphone was there in my backpack. It was on airplane mode. And a big shock to me was students would tell me they had subs who were actually in the room would be on the cellphone. Students, but I'm very happy, I subbed today at Lathrop, and I was very happy to learn of the new cellphone policy. I want to thank you for implementing that, that students will not have their cellphones with them. It will be in their locker except at lunchtime. And it sounds like a pretty capable way of maintaining that. What I mean is there's a definite consequence that can be implemented. They're going to get it taken away, you know, it's going to make the job of the sub, of the guest teachers, a lot easier. And I want to thank you all for adopting that. And I do hope that it is consistently enforced. I think it can be because of the fact that students will be made to have it in their locker. I want to thank you all for having that and for making my time in a classroom a lot easier. I appreciate that. And I'm sure for the teachers too, a number of the teachers I talked with, they were very happy that that's the new policy in place. I want to thank you all for that.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we're going to jump over to Zoom. Do we have Christina Reed?
Yes.
Good evening, Ms. Reed. If you could state your name, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, yes, Christina Reed, R-I-E-D. I am calling in from Fairbanks in the Hamilton Acres area. I'm a single mom of three kids that attend Barnett Magnet, and I'm also the music teacher of our 415 K-8 students. It was a shocking start to the new year, missing our three and a half FTE teachers, which is four human beings out of the rotation in our schedules, to the point that we have had to cut our program so far back that our students now have one required class, one elective class, where we used to have three explorations and time to have more student choice. But these were not just quote exploratory teachers. These teachers were mainly, and most devastatingly so, math and science teachers. And as well as an art program, which I believe every middle school should have. And our middle school model that we have supports students 4th through 8th grade in that style of model, as well as our K-3 specials. So it's pretty difficult. Just to give you one idea of a current math class that my 6th grade son could be in is 38 6th and 7th graders that are being taught in one classroom with a mix of two levels of math being taught. No teacher should have to do that, let alone the teachers that we've had to shuffle from different positions into new positions. It was also said that no teachers were laid off. We have a halftime teacher that could start immediately, who did not have a job with the district, who has six children, five of which go to Barnett now, and was our halftime science teacher for our 2nd, 3rd, and 4th grade students. We are missing a full middle school teacher, and that has greatly impacted all of these class sizes. A lot of us are teaching classes and helping tutor and do all of these things that are outside of our normal scope of work because of the scarcity of just the number of people in the building. Year after year, we've been cut, sort of death by a thousand cuts, and it just feels like we would like to have some support back. When Dr. Minor gave a pat on the back to those legislators for overturning the veto and getting us money back.
Thank you for your testimony.
They said that was for lower class sizes. And it's been stated that it was too late to add teachers back.
Ms. Reed, that's the end of your testimony. If you could email us the rest of it, that would be great.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Hey, thank you for your testimony. That brings us to the end of our signup list. That brings us to the end of our sign up list. We do have one more who signed up here in the boardroom. So if we could have Ms. Gail McBride. Good evening, Ms. McBride. If you could state your name, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Gail McBride, M-C-B-R-I-D-E with Moms for Liberty. Just wanted to say here we are all again, looking toward a new year. I am looking forward and am optimistic that we'll be able to accomplish some of the very important goals of some policy change and things like that. Mostly, as you all know, there's a couple of policies that we're working hard for the children and believe that it will make the students safer and healthier. And that's what we'll continue to work on this year. And so we're looking forward to more, maybe more communication, that would be nice. But I don't know really how that works. I know you guys are all busy and we're all busy and there doesn't seem to be a a way, an opportunity for that, but we'll see maybe. But just wanted to say we're going to continue working on the things we've been working on and are looking forward to actually accomplishing them this year before the budget time comes. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. McBride. That brings us to the end of all of our signups. Is there anybody else in the room who wishes to testify this evening? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. Moving on, do we have Ms. O'Neil, Ms. Richardson for our Borough Assembly Report on Zoom? No? Okay, not seeing Ms. O'Neil, so we will have no Borough Assembly Report. We will move into our advisory member reports and comments. We do not have Mr. Wade or Ms. Charlie tonight. Actually, Ms. Richardson, is Mr. Wade on Zoom by any chance? No? Okay, thank you. So we will go to Colonel Foster.
Thank you. So from an Ison standpoint, a lot of change over the summer. So we had our wing commander, Colonel Townsend, change out and our new wing commander is Colonel Matthew, goes by Scout Johnston. So he is on board, getting settled in. So we are adjusting to some new ways of doing business there. So it's all good. It's all the up and up. So we're happy to be here, looking forward to another productive school year for a lot of our students. We had a lot of new students PCS in. As you know, a lot of PCSs, permanent changes of stations take place over the summer for both Ison and Fort Wayne right. So we do have some new students that are filling out the new schools. So there's some apprehension there with students as a PCS, which is part of our, our lives is, is what we deal with. So you'll see some of the students getting adjusted to the new schools, but we have a lot of things in place to assist those new students. And we are just happy for the new school year and look forward to what's to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel Foster. Any questions from the board for Colonel Foster? Seeing none. And once again, Colonel Campbell, welcome to the board. This is your first opportunity.
No, thank you for the opportunity and first want to just say thank you for the opportunity to, to be present today and provide input from the stance of Fort Wayne right. So honored to be a part of this and appreciate the warm welcome from the team today as you've brought me on and educated me. So upfront, we did, we also had a change out, our commanding general, Major General Hilbert, switched out 11th Airborne Division and General Cogbill is now in a position as of about two weeks ago. So we're, we're working with him, getting guidance and, and we're moving out as you can expect. Winter's coming in exercises, soldiers in the field, families moving around. So, but everything I heard from our team today, school, on post, everything went well. When I talked to our DES, which is our military police and the buses and everything. So I know it was a little bit of a different day with the soldiers having early, well, late call so they could take their kids to school, but as far as traffic patterns and that kind of stuff, we'll really get a true test tomorrow. But overall, great, great first day of school and looking forward to working with the team here. So thanks for your time and appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Colonel Campbell. Any questions from the board? Mr. Dorn.
Colonel Campbell, thank you for joining us and congratulations on your new position. I'm going to direct the question to you, but also Colonel Foster, he may offer some perspective for Ison. Colonel Cole last spring indicated that Fort Wayne right was looking at indications where that there were more families coming, perhaps larger families, that type of thing. Do you have at this point, a little bit of an update of how that is done, how that has worked out? And Colonel Foster, perhaps as you talked about new students coming, some idea of whether Ison is, is growing or where, where we stand with the military on that?
No, thank you for that question. And we just had a civil mail relations with some of the civilian leadership in town and we, we talked this a little bit. So this is, this is helpful. We don't have any timelines yet. We do know there is a 16th cab is going to come up and support our installation with some aviation capability. Right now, we're waiting for that final TDA. What a TDA is, is the manning document that solidifies exactly how many that is. So we're waiting for that solidification. We know they're coming. We just don't know how much and what that requirement looks like. So I'll be able to get you more details. There's a rough frame of 200 to 400 soldiers that we think will be coming up here, but we don't have the exact numbers yet. So as soon as we get that, we'll let the community know. Obviously, there's a tail of logistics that comes with that when we talk families and where they're going to be in, in schooling and housing and all that. So we recognize that there's a requirement to, to get to the community on that, but don't have the exact details on what that looks like right now. But I appreciate that question and, and we're keeping our ear to the ground. So we're, we're working with you. Over to you, Tim.
Yeah, same thing for Ison. So we have another 175 F-35 aircraft maintainers that are part of the original bed down of the F-35s. They are still on their way. We can start to see those airmen and their families. We don't know the exact breakout of the size of the families yet as they're still trying to place faces to spaces. But we can start to see them show up in the last quarter of '25 and then it'll be kind of a waterfall over the next 12 to 16 months. And then we also have another 240 plus bodies slash families coming as part of the TFI Total Force Integration KC-135 bed down that Senator Sullivan pushed through. So that's still, that's starting to show over the next 18 months to 24 months. But all those timelines are about as firm as warm jello. So we, as we get closer, I'd probably say within 120 days, we might be able to get some very specific numbers of families. But then very similar to Fort Wayne right, the housing piece is a concern. So our, we could house on base or we can house in the community in North Pole all the way down through Fairbanks. So their schooling could be anywhere from on base at Ison all the way through the Fairbanks, North Star Borough. So don't know what that's going to look like yet, but that's what we're kind of looking at.
Thank you both for those updates. Appreciate it.
Any other questions from board members? Seeing none at this time, we will move on to our board committee reports. Board, is there any committee reports from anybody? Mr. Burgess.
Not really report, but I believe the curriculum committee has vacancies. So members of the public are encouraged to apply.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Ms. Julian.
Yeah, thank you. I'll speak to the budget committee. We are almost full for the budget committee, but I just wanted to kind of share a little bit about what that budget committee does and the dates that we're meeting. So the purpose of the school board's budget committee is to provide for the board stakeholder engagement and participation in the process related to the business of the committee, which is to review the budget. The work product that that budget committee works on is to make a recommendation or recommendations to the school board regarding budget-related issues, either reductions or add backs. And so it is a pretty critical committee. I'm, I'm hopeful that if we don't have full participation, that I know that the process is still open. So people can apply online and all of our applications are on the school board website. The first budget committee is October 9th and it will culminate hopefully in December and then perhaps meet again when we go through the budget cycle in the spring. So committees are a great way to participate and to get a little bit closer to the work of this board. So encourage your participation.
Thank you, Mrs. Julian. Anything from any other board members in regards to committees? Seeing none, we will move on to the president's report. And if you would give me a moment. All right. So good evening, everyone, and welcome back. I want to take a moment to wish all of our educators, staff, and students a wonderful school year. The energy of a new year is always exciting and I'm grateful for the dedication and hard work that makes this district thrive. It was a great morning spent at schools. I love seeing all the new faces. The best part was a little kindergartner at Ann Ween who showed up and proudly exclaimed, "Hi, guys, I am here." It was the cutest darn thing and I loved it. She was just so proud. I want to take a moment to express my sincere appreciation to our legislators for their leadership and support in overriding the governor's veto. Their action provides much-needed stability to our district and demonstrates a shared commitment to investing in our schools and supporting our students. Dr. Minor and I have been in close discussion regarding the district's financial outlook and the possibility of an amended budget. At this time, we both believe it is prudent to pause and carefully monitor our student enrollment during the first 10 days of school before making any significant adjustments. If enrollment numbers come in strong and align closely with our projections, the more the board may be in a position to thoughtfully consider some of our targeted add backs to restore programs or positions that were reduced. However, if enrollment falls short of projections, we will need to evaluate how that impacts anticipated revenue for the year and plan accordingly. In the meantime, district administration will continue working through the 10-day enrollment balancing process, ensuring that staffing is aligned with actual enrollment numbers across our schools. This approach reflects our commitment to fiscal responsibility while maintaining our focus on meeting student needs. I also want to briefly address the nutrition services fee policy. I know this has raised concern in the community, particularly the perception that students might go without meals. I want to be clear, no child will go hungry in our district. I know Dr. Minor will speak to this further in his report tonight. I think it is also important for the community to know that if we provided all students with free meals, this would easily be over $2 million that would need to be transferred from the general fund to support this. Last but not least, I would like to ask the administration for updates on the services provided to our schools by ABM. The board and I are looking forward to hearing how our partnership progresses in the near future. Once again, welcome back to all of our incredible educators, staff, and students. We truly hope you have a fantastic school year. Anything from the board? Seeing none at this time, Dr. Minor, the floor is yours for your superintendent report.
All right. Thank you, President Burnett, and a big welcome to Colonel Campbell. It's great to have you on board and I no longer feel bad about the length of my bio or resume as people read it. That was quite impressive. I thought the board might need to extend the time a little bit, but it was, it was great. And great that we have such a qualified and well-seasoned person in our midst. And so looking forward to working with you on the board. And we have great, a great partnership with Fort Wayne right and their leadership and so look forward to continuing that with you. So welcome back to Fairbanks. I would also like to extend my thanks to the legislature, huge override of the governor's veto. It is one step towards providing adequate funding for education here in Alaska and certainly for our Fairbanks students. A huge thank you to Senator Kronk, Senator Kawasaki, Representative Carrick, Representative Maxine Diabor, and Representative Stapp, who are all part of our interior delegation. And of course, the other representatives and senators from around the state. Thank you to the public testimony tonight that highlighted AR-1410. I do want to speak to that just a little bit this evening. In light of recent immigration and customs enforcement's activity here in Fairbanks and around the state, I do want to reaffirm our district's commitment to providing safe, welcoming, and high-quality, high-quality learning environments for all of our students. Through Administrative Regulation 1410, we ensure that non-emergency visits from government officials are handled with care and in compliance with federal law, including, including FERPA, which is the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, which protects our students' privacy. No outside individual or agency may access student records or disrupt school operations without proper legal documentation, such as judicial warrants or court orders. I also want to let families know that Durham Transportation, our transportation provider, also has a district policy in place to uphold student privacy. If contacted by non-emergency governmental personnel, a bus driver will contact local law enforcement to help verify documentation. Additionally, the bus driver will contact dispatch, who will contact the district office, who will send personnel out to help manage the situation. Our focus remains on supporting every student within our schools and fostering schools where all children feel secure, valued, and able to thrive. Want to give a great staffing update. As we begin the school year, we're starting strong on the staffing front. We currently have just eight vacant positions, which is considerably lower than past years. Even among the elementary positions that we have open, we're fortunate to have long-term substitutes in place for many of them. As you've heard in past years, our retired educators in our community step up big for our schools. And so a huge shout out to them to, you know, continuing to come back in support of our schools. I was at U Park this morning and I feel like there were as many retired educators there as there were just regular educators. And so it was great to see all of the familiar faces that, you know, have had a long history within our district and are there to help support our children. So thanks to the retired educators for helping us out. I will note one challenge in staffing is some of the international hires we have have had some visa application issues. And so some of them have not arrived for day one of teaching and we'll be monitoring that situation very closely and adjusting our hiring cycles within the next year based on what we're seeing within that realm. I do want to speak to nutrition services as there's been a great community in, energy and thoughtful discussion surrounding the procedural changes. And I do want to say procedural changes, there's been a lot of talk about the new policy. Want to be clear, policy is set by the board. This is a procedural change done by the administration through the Nutrition Services Department that's responsible for falling within the budgets that the board sets. I do want to express our appreciation to families, staff, community partners for engaging in the conversations. Food insecurity is a complex topic and it's great that it's started such a great community conversation. Want to provide context that last year during the 24, 25 school district, we took a more lenient approach or flexible approach to meal charging. Students for the first time ever were allowed to accrue negative balances with no set limits, essentially covering one breakfast and one lunch per day for all students. While this was done with compassion in mind, the result was a total student meal debt of nearly $80,000 by year's end. It's important to note that this debt represents only a portion of the broader financial challenges within our Nutritional Services Department and our school district, which is significantly underfunded due to inadequate federal reimbursements through the National School Lunch Program. Each year, we experience a shortfall in the range of at least $300,000 to $700,000 for just our meal services alone, which the district is oftentimes forced to offset using other resources or general revenue funds. As we move into the 25, 26 school year, we're returning to a more structured and sustainable practice, which a similar practice had been in place for years prior to last year. All students, including secondary students, will be allowed to charge meals, but only up to the equivalent of five days worth of breakfast and lunch. After reaching that threshold, no additional debt can be accrued. Schools will provide alternative meals through food pantries or donations and our nutrition services staff will work closely with our front office to ensure supports are in place for students in need. Staff will also work with students discreetly as they enter the lunchroom, providing food in a way that appears as though it was brought for home, preserving the students' integrity. And to be clear, students, as President Burnett stated, will not be sent to the principal's office, nor will any students go hungry in our midst. This is not a disciplinary matter. It's a student support issue and we'll continue to treat it as such. I think we've also improved communication strategies over the past several years with families, reminding them of balance reminders. Those will be emailed daily, which they have in past years. There'll also be weekly communications through parent squares on meal balances. And students will receive specifically in elementary schools, printed cards that go home if their meal balances go in the negative. Families can also always go online to school cafe and check out what their student's meal balance is as well as. as add money into those funds. For those who are able to help with donations, to help cover school meal balances, we welcome those contributions. You can make it either at the district level or individual schools. If you donate to a school, that principal will use those donations to cover meal balances throughout the week. If it's at a district level, those funds will be distributed out equitably to our schools to also carry out taking away meal balances for students. And so there's a number of different ways that meal balances can be cleared through our donations. I want to thank our charitable community partners that did donate over $50,000 last year. That's a huge part of what we were able to do in providing meals for students, and I think with the conversations that has, have happened in the last couple of weeks, we'll continue to receive those donations. So, thank you for that. Lastly, if you're passionate about food security for our students, Representative Maxine Diaper is sponsoring HB 12, which is a bill that's currently in the legislature that would provide free breakfast and lunch for all Alaskan students. She's passionate about this topic and would appreciate your support for this legislation. We've seen this happen in other states and has had bipartisan support, and there's a lot of data that goes along with if we want students to achieve, they need to have regular meals and consistent meals. And so, Ms. Diaper, Representative Diaper, is carrying that bill throughout this legislative session. A transportation update. We currently have 83 total routes that ran as of this morning. That's a better start than past years. This is 58 regular and 25 special education routes. We're hopeful that we'll be able to add five additional special education routes on September 2nd. Currently have 79 active drivers and standby drivers here in Fairbanks. We have 11 part-time drivers, and we have 15 TDY drivers that are from out-of-state that Durham has lent us until mid-September. For the board, mid-September is that time period where a lot of drivers with CDLs are leaving their construction jobs or tourism jobs, and so we oftentimes do see a bump within our drivers that are coming back to drive buses for us. And so I'm happy to say that we're in a pretty good position as of right now for our transportation routes and value Durham as a partner to safely transport our students on a daily basis. At the president's request, we, a little information about ABM. We are beginning our evening custodial services with ABM, and while we've experienced some initial bumps as the contract has gotten underway, their management team has been highly receptive to feedback and committed to improvement as we've brought up issues to them. Over the weekend, ABM even flew in a crew to ensure all of our schools were ready and clean for the start of the, start of the year, and they only have three current vacancies for their custodial staff, which is great, great staffing and is stronger than what we've been able to provide in the past. And so, we're hopeful that this new custodial model and the partnership going forward will be successful, and I'll continue to bring information to the board and the public on how that's working. In tonight's agenda, there'll be discussion on Ms. Hardy's resignation, and just wanted to give a little shout-out to Ms. Hardy. Ms. Hardy was a fierce advocate for all students here in Fairbanks, always placing their needs at the forefront of her decision-making. Her thoughtful leadership and tireless advocacy have helped move our schools forward in meaningful ways, and her work will continue to benefit students and staff long into the future. And so just wanted to thank Ms. Hardy for her work on the board, both as a board member and a board president. She sacrificed a lot, and I wish her well and her next adventures. A great update on donations from last year, and I'm almost done, guys. I know it's a long report tonight, sorry. Lots, lots of great things to share out. For fiscal year '25, our district was fortunate to receive over $631,000 in cash and in-kind donations from 59 individuals, businesses, and organizations, and this total doesn't even include the donations under $1,000. And so, just wanted to highlight that. These contributions highlight what makes us truly special. We have community schools and that are deeply supported by our community, and so a thank you to each and every person and organization that donated to our schools last year. You continue to provide programs and options and opportunities for our students that make a difference day in and day out. And lastly, just a huge welcome back to the board, to our community, to our students, and to our families, to our schools. It was a great day in our schools. I made it out to several of the schools, and it's always great to have that first-day energy and seeing our students' families, students and families back engaged with Fairbanks schools. So, thank you for trusting us with your students, and we're looking forward to a really great year together. And happy to answer any questions for the board.
Thank you, Dr. Minor, for your report. Questions from the board. Mr. Burgess?
Thanks. Where, where would you like me to start?
Do you have four pages of notes, like Mr. Dorn?
Negative.
You said six.
One, one page. So, I guess I'll start with a quick comment about ABM. You know, I did note that, that the challenges that they initially encountered, you know, not, not a bit of a rocky start to a new contract, but I'm glad that they were able to fly people in to get the cleaning done. I do note that those are people from outsider community. Now, as far as, I'll, I'll go next to the, the Durham's policy for immigration enforcement. I'm curious how closely theirs mirrors ours, or what, where, you know, if there, you could do a little compare/contrast, and specifically, I'm looking for, you know, are district officials notified as part of their process, and what do they do to verify that a warrant that they might be presented with is legitimate?
Yeah, that's a great question. Their policy almost mirrors ours one-to-one in terms of pausing the situation if they are contacted by non-emergency governmental officials, that they would verify the documentation, to ensure that it's legal documentation, such as a judicial warrant or court order. They also would wait for local law enforcement to ensure that the person stating that they're a federal agent is a federal agent. There's been instances, mostly in the lower 48, of impersonating federal agents, and so they take that very seriously to ensure that local law enforcement can help ensure that the agent is who they say they are. They would work with our team, mostly our legal counsel, to ensure that the court orders and the legal documentation that they're providing is adequate and prior to contacting students within their realm.
One follow-up?
Follow-up?
Thank you for that explanation. That's really helpful. And I guess as the, the follow-up is, what types of communication might go out to families or, or staff in a situation like that, whether it's at a school or, or at a bus? Transportation route?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's definitely situational-dependent. You know, us as an educational institution definitely want to protect the privacy of individual students and families, and so if it's an individual matter, we would connect with that family immediately. If it's more of, I don't know, a broad interaction, we would certainly communicate either with individuals on that bus or the entire school community. I will say that our communications team does a great job of handling emergency communications. We have a toolkit that helps guide us so that we can get out communications rather quickly, but it would be somewhat dependent on the situation that comes to us.
Thank you. I have more, but you can get someone else in.
Mrs. Dullian?
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on, thank you for the update on custodial, and wanted to ask, have there been any change orders from the ABM contractors at, at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay, great. And then, do you, one follow-up is the head custodian positions that are still district positions. How many positions are there, and do we have any vacancies with those?
That's information I'll need to get back to you on.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't give that to you.
That's okay.
Thanks.
Mr. Dorn?
Thank you, and I appreciate the updates, and especially number of the community-wide concerns that have come up, nutrition and things of that sort. Question on ABM. I really appreciate they brought additional staff in to make sure the rooms are ready, since we had had some information that there were rooms not ready prior to this weekend. I just want to make sure they were ready and clean by this morning.
Yeah, I believe they were. I went to three of our schools that were the problematic schools the day before school to ensure that the custodial coverage had occurred and that our schools were looking great and ready for students. Pleased to report that they were, and have had, you know, through our custodial coordinators and FMD report back that our schools were ready for students and are looking good.
And I might note that one feedback that I got the other day is that number of the, the custodians, the ABM custodians, our former custodians from, and are familiar with our buildings and feel some ownership with that. So, that was a, a nice report to get back from. It was one of the custodial managers, so. My other question is enrollment. I know it is very, very, very early, and it doesn't mean a trend or anything, you know, first day back after the summer break, and a lot of different movement for people who are still moving into our town and, and to other places perhaps, but just a snapshot, and we, understanding that it is only a snapshot from the first day of how our enrollment is looking.
Mr. Dorn, you didn't let me down. I anticipated this question as you, you ask it. Usually, you know, our board meeting doesn't fall on the same day as the start of school, and so this year it really is too early to make a lot of predictions on where our enrollment is, especially because most of our high school students don't arrive on the first day. We do jumpstarts with our freshmen, and so we're not sure how the enrollment will play out there. Also, on the first day of school, a lot of times, families are still traveling, whether it may be to the state fair, or finishing family vacations, or just forgot that school started this week, and so we'll see within that 10-day count period how that looks. I think I'll definitely have a great update for the board at our next board meeting, which is early September, and as we work through even this week, I'll be sure to keep the board abreast in terms of where our enrollment projects, projections are looking, especially because Mr. President Burnett mentioned that does have budget implications, and so depending on how our enrollment is trending, that's truly what revenue we will receive. You know, we base our budget on projections, but the reality is, is the whites of the eyes of students coming in our schools, and so we'll have a much better idea of, you know, what that enrollment projection looks like and how that will impact revenues for the school year.
Mr. Burgess, back to you. Oh, Ms. Carol Hubbard? No. Ms. Dullian, did you have another question? Mr. Burgess, go ahead.
Apologies, I thought Carol Hubbard was waiting to speak.
I have a list. I have a beautiful list.
So, I want to ask a couple of questions about nutrition services because it's been a, a topic of community interest, and I think you kind of covered this in your report, so thank you, but I just wanted to reiterate, you know, that, you know, what happens specifically in the lunch line if a student does have too much debt to purchase lunch, but they've gone there, and what I'm, I'm just going to ask this as one question, you know, is it obvious to their peers, and how do staff mitigate feelings of shame, and that sort of thing that might, that might come up?
Yeah, so I'll start by saying our education, our educators are amazing professionals that deal with sensitive topics on a daily basis with individual students. It's amazing how many sensitive topics our educators deal with that other people have no idea about. And so, thinking that nutrition services is somewhat different than all of these other situations that they deal with, it's not. Now, in terms of the lunch line, our approach is a proactive approach that I don't think that our students will hit the lunch line without those students knowing what their lunch balances are, and to the supports that need to be in place for students in terms of having additional meals available. That's the approach that we're taking that, you know, before they would even hit the lunch line, that we've had, we have a plan in place with their families to provide, either provide meal services, to erase the debt that they owe, or have some kind of plan formulated so that we know how that student's going to be fed on that day. So, that's the approach that we're taking, and I think we'll, we'll be able to achieve that. It's also important to note that in our cafeterias, there's a number of caring adults right by the lunch lines that are readily available to work with students on all kinds of different needs. Sometimes there's dietary restrictions or different things that they have to work with students on. Just today, I was at Ryan's lunchroom, and I was with a visitor, and I said, "How, how many adults are in the lunchroom right now?" And there were five adults within just the lunch line itself, and over 10 adults in the cafeteria as well. And so, there's a lot of caring and trusted adults around to provide supports for our students.
Thank you, and if I could just add a quick comment. I, I just, I wanted to say that I know when, when I saw announcements go out on social media and other board members saw that, that several of us contacted you immediately, and it was really encouraging that you were already on top of the situation. It sounded like there was a, a small communication issue with the way that things went out, and so thank you for working with your staff to, to address that, and, and for providing the detailed and accurate information, a follow-up email, that, and for being very responsive to board concerns and questions. I just want to note that every question and idea that I had, like getting donations in advance so that debt is covered before it accrues, these, these, every, everything that I brought up, all the ideas, all the questions, Dr. Minor was already on top of it, had already had those same ideas or better ones. So, thank you for, for doing that well.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess, and I'd like to second that. Thank you, Dr. Minor, for always being on top of things. And Mr. Burgess, and Ms. Maple, and Ms. Dullian, and Mr. Dorn, thank you for getting on administration and calling Dr. Minor and handling it. It was very awesome to see the board and work like that. Mrs. Dullian?
Okay, thank you. I, I think that Mr. Burgess and I are mind-melded in how we want to ask questions today, so. He already asked what I was going to ask, but I want to talk about, I want to actually prompt you to talk a little bit about something else when it comes to nutrition services, and that's the free and reduced lunch application. I know that there's a lot of community members who have said, "How can we help? How can we donate?" But there's another aspect of this, which is really removing the shame and removing any type of judgment around the free and reduced lunch application. Can you talk a little bit about some of the qualifiers that are, that may surprise people, that, "Oh, maybe I, I do qualify for this, and I could get either reduced lunch or free lunch," just to help my students out, or, and even that process? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad you raised that. That's something that we've been working hard to ensure that families understand that there is a way to receive free or reduced meals, and it's a fairly easy application process that they can either fill out online or paper. Many of our schools send out regular reminders to be able to fill out that paperwork. They're also willing to help you at the school level complete it, and it's important to note that that not only helps us for our food service program, it also qualifies us for Title I dollars and other federal funds, which can be incredibly helpful for our schools. It provides additional supports and after-school programming. So, anything that people can do to help us in that realm would be great. I, I strongly feel like we have a couple of schools that are underrepresented with our free and reduced lunch numbers that could qualify for Title I or qualify for additional federal funds, but we just don't receive the amount of applications back to actually qualify those schools. And so, we'll continue to work hard from the district and school standpoint to ensure that families understand how to fill out those applications and the importance of them.
Mr. Dorn?
Just a follow-up on the free and reduced applications. Could you explain or touch upon that for some people may say, "Well, I work for part of the year, so I may not qualify," but because people may have seasonal jobs, it's worth checking in because you can qualify perhaps between those work seasons?
Absolutely. We accept those applications all year round, and exactly like you said, work, you know, the amount of income or work for some people change, changes frequently, and so. And so you might not think that you qualified today, but maybe a month down the road, your employment situation has changed and that application is still available for your family to fill out.
Anything further from the board? Seeing nothing at this time. Thank you, Dr. Minert. And that's just a, one more time, just a reminder out there to get those free reduced lunch applications filled out. I went to the application the other day and actually was surprised at the, where the standards were for qualification. And so please, I encourage everybody out there, you'd be surprised to learn that many would qualify. So it's a great service that we offer. At this time, the board's going to take a brief recess before we jump into our new business action items. Board, please be back here at 7:10. Thank you. Okay, the board is back from recess and we're going to jump back into it with our action items, getting into our new business. We have our school board vacancy. Up next, I had received a letter of resignation on Monday, July 28th, from Mrs. Brandy Hardy, board member announcing her immediate resignation. For some information for the board with Mrs. Hardy's resignation, this does put us under a couple of things that we do need to speak about. This leaves us obviously with an open seat. We are also up against some deadlines here and some policy stipulations, which puts us about 30 days from the election, which there is a stipulation which states if we are seating a board member and we fall within that 30 days, we can go with a vacant seat. Dr. Minert, if you would, do you have those dates and what that would look like for the board if we were to fulfill this seat and how that works out?
Yeah. So some of that will depend on when we start the advertisement for the position after the conversation tonight. Administration will have some direction on how the board would like to proceed. We would, we have potential communications and advertisements prepped. And at that point in time, we would just be waiting on the newspaper in terms of when they could print that advertisement for us. But with that said, the advertising guidelines would put us into the first part of September. So anywhere from probably September 2nd to September 4th or 5th, I would say, which then means after we get a qual, a list of interested people that would like to sit on the board, the board would need to reconvene probably in a special meet, special meeting to decide who would be placed in that vacant seat, which then could put the person either seated for, at the soonest, I think, the end of September meeting. Worst-case scenario would be beginning of October. But really, it's probably two board meetings at most that that vacant position could potentially be filled.
Thank you, Dr. Minert. So with that information, I will open it up for discussion from the board.
Motion. Do you want the motion?
We can either do the motion or we can have the discussion first, whichever you would like to do, Mr. Doran.
I would suggest the motion that we, because the motion is to accept the resignation and then we can talk about.
Fantastic. I will take the motion at this time, Mr. Doran.
Move to accept the resignation of Brandy Hardy to school board seat, see effective immediately.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. At this time, we will open it up for public testimony. Is there any testimony on Mrs. Hardy's resignation? Seeing none at this time, public testimony is now closed. Moving back to the board, we will open it up for discussion. And what's before us? Ms. Julian?
Thank you. I would like to speak to our policy and following that policy, even though it's, would only potentially seat a temporary board member for, you know, no more than two meetings. I think that it's important that we, you know, stay true to the policies that are in front of us and make sure that the community has an opportunity to participate and in that, in that process. So I would move to, I would, I'm, I'm in favor of opening up that, that resignation, that advertisement as soon as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Julian. Ms. Carol Hubbard?
I'd like to know when the election is.
The election is October 7th.
October 7th. And so if we seeded, sorry, follow-up then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, if we, if we seat a board member at the end of September, beginning of October, and we have an election right there, then when does the, the board member then comes in at the end of October?
Yes, ma'am.
And so it would be basically the two meetings in October that would be attended by the replacement board member?
Yes, it would at least be two meetings, possibly three, depending on how this works out. But yes, that would be. And then they would remove themselves when we, or when the board at that time swears in the new board members.
Okay. And sorry, may I follow up one more?
Of course.
Thank you. Is, would we be, would we be following the policy if we did not bring someone in? Or, or will we be following the policy if we do bring someone in? I mean, is there, is there a gray area there or is it black and white?
So from what I understand, it's actually both. We're following policy with both as there are two deadlines here that we are facing, one of them being the 30 days from election and then one being the resignation policy. Dr. Minert, would that be a correct interpretation?
Yes.
So we're, we're, yes, we're following policy with both of these instances. We are not wrong in any direction.
Okay, then I would like to speak to not filling the seat and just leaving it vacant for the next board member to be elected.
Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard. Mr. Doran?
Okay, thank you. To the immediate acceptance of the resignation of Brandy Hardy, I do want to say that thank her, take the opportunity, as Superintendent Minert did earlier, but to take the opportunity to thank her for her service to our district, not only on the board, but also she is a former teacher of her, you know, within our district and has been heavily involved as a volunteer in her child's schools, et cetera. So she has really contributed to our district on many fronts and want to express appreciation for what she has brought to our district and to our board and the conversations.
Recording stopped.
Okay. The, in terms of the vacancy that then is faces us, I also would be in favor of not filling it at this time in terms of looking at the policy and reviewing it. That we, it requires a minimum 14-days advertisement. That brings us really past the, our next September meeting. We need to then review the applications, perhaps talk typically in the past when this has happened, there are interviews with the applicants. And as it happens in September, that our meetings are at the early part of the month, first half of the month. So to get all of that done becomes very problematic and puts us well within the 30 days prior to the election. And very glad that we have four candidates who are running for that, for school board at this time. So we'd have that election piece, which really does leave us to the, the two meetings. And for someone to get up to snuff, if you will, for, for two meetings is, demands extreme amount of effort. The other thing I'm mindful of is certainly things can come up, but there are no major issues as such in front of us that the six remaining board members would not be able to address and resolve. So in accord with our policy and, and as you mentioned, the 30-day prior to, within the 30 days of an election, it's the board's option by policy to fill or not fill. So given that option, in accord with our policy and the timelines that are required to advertise, consider applicants, et cetera, and only two meetings remaining, I'm in favor of not filling the vacancy.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Any other board members who would like to have input on this item? I will comment in agreeance with Mr. Doran. I think that with our unique position that we find ourselves in with the 30-day timeline, having somebody come in for two meetings, I would agree, seems to not be worthwhile their time. And so I would also be in favor of leaving the seat vacant. I do believe that anything this board needs to do that we can conquer with the six of us, absolutely. Anything from any other board members? Mr. Doran?
Just to have a procedural question, because I think it can go either way. We will be taking We will be taking a vote on the current motion on the table, which is to accept the resignation. Do you want a separate motion to, but I don't think it's needed, but I just wanted to check whether we needed to make a second motion. I, I believe we're okay in our discussion saying we're not going to fill it.
I believe we are too, but I will refer to administration just to make sure our bases are covered.
Yeah, absolutely. I support just the discussion and the original main motion.
Fantastic. Thank you, Dr. Minert. With that, is there anything from remaining board members on Mrs. Hardy's resignation or filling the seat? Mr. Burgess?
I'll just take the opportunity to, to thank Mrs. Hardy for her service. She actually is one of the people who helped me out. She was my campaign treasurer, but she was also a mentor when I, when I got on this board. She, she, as, she served as board president that year. And I was very, you know, I, I just, I was, I was really touched by the work that she put in, not only to the job, but to helping other board members learn the job, to making sure that we're all working as a team. And I really appreciated that. I think that as, as president, Mrs. Hardy introduced a lot of practices and helped to shape new policies with the board that I think really moved the board in a positive direction and I appreciated that. Now, of course, there were challenges too, but, but she handled those with grace, I believe. And I just, I just wanted to say, you know, like, I, I'll miss her on this board, I will. Despite any challenges that we may have had in these last months, I really appreciate all of the work that she put in, all of the passion that she put in and all of the help that she gave to me and other board members to, to help learn this job.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess.
And I'll just say, I'm happy to, to just wait till the election as well.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Mr. Dorn?
It just occurred to me that perhaps for the community clarification, that Mrs. Hardy is not, she's not leaving her position here early in terms of her sense of service, but she's leaving because circumstances for her family have moved. And what's really to her credit is, to the best of my knowledge, she is going to be teaching students and continuing that service to students. So I, I think that's an important note of appreciation that people should be aware of.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. I also would like to throw out my gratitude. Mrs. Hardy, if you are listening, I'm sure she will come back at some point and listen. Thank you for your work. We ran in the same election. We had a lot of differences, but man, there wasn't one person on this board that I was more like. It was Brandy Hardy. We were so alike and I just hold so much respect for everything she has taught me, not just as a president, but as a board member. Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. We hope you, wish you the best and I just hope that Washington treats you well. With that, Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Colonel Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Dullian?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you, Mrs. Richardson. Moving on, we will move into board policy. Nine thirty-five point one, charter schools, establishment of charter schools, first reading. BP nine thirty-five one is proposed to be revised and is before the board for first reading by administration. Hello, Ms. Dillard. Good evening to you.
Good evening, President Burnett. I'm going to put the policies up on the screen real quick.
For the board, we'll let Ms. Dillard give us any updates on the policy, then we'll put the motion forward for discussion.
Okay, thank you. We're starting with board policy nine three five point one. This is a policy establishment of charter schools. Alaska statute fourteen oh three two fifty A requires each local school board to prescribe an application procedure for establishing a charter school. And with the passage of House Bill fifty-seven, there are two additional sentences that were added to that statute. The first one being, the application procedure must allow an application to be submitted at any time during a school year for the following school year. And the second part to that is a local school board shall announce the deadline to submit an application for establishment of a charter school for the following year. So what this means is that state law now explicitly requires school district charter school application procedures to allow an application to be submitted at any time during the school year for the following year. The purpose is to preclude districts from closing the application window before the school year ends and to preclude districts from adopting policy that would prevent applicants from starting to operate during the next school year. So as we're looking at the policy, sentences one and number, number one and number three are the minimum additions to the policy required to comply with the new law. So the first sentence, an application to establish a charter school may be submitted at any time during the school year, prior to the school year during which the proposed charter school would begin operation. That is a minimum requirement. That third sentence being, by September first of each school year, the district administration will announce the deadline to apply for the establishment of a charter school to begin operation at the start of the following school year. So the date September one is not in the statute. However, this date recommended by legal counsel ensures a clear guideline for district administration regarding when the deadline must be announced for each year. The additional revisions to this policy are not legally required per the House Bill fifty-seven, but recommended to ensure as much clarity as possible. The second sentence defines school year. So there is no question as to what we are referring to when referencing school year or the term the following school year in the policy. And I'll bring this up a bit. The bullet point. The bullet point states that board-approved applications submitted after October first may not begin operation until after January first in the following year. So this January first date is not required. However, an approved charter school application must be allowed to begin operations at some point in the following year. So that January deadline is going to be the best possible date if we were to, if we were to have an approved charter school that had to be implemented the next year. So all we, although we did hear from board members during work session that opening a charter school in the middle of the school year is less than ideal, we cannot categorically limit an approved charter school from beginning operations in the school year following the application. This is why the second to last paragraph clarifies the district's position on an ideal application and establishment process. And then the last paragraph clarifies the district's right to deny an application based on the timing of an application or the impact on the district's budget. And there was some discussion at work session about potentially discussing factors as opposed to deny language, but it would really be impossible to name all of the potential known and there, and the unknown factors the board may consider with future applications. State statute doesn't provide really clear guidance on what goes into approving or denying out an application. This shortlist here does connect directly to the primary focus of the policy, which is application timelines. Ultimately, the board has the discretion to decide in the district's best interest. And any denial must include legal justification and factual findings supporting your decision. And applicants can appeal to the state if the, if the school board denies an application. So with that, I will take questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dillard. Questions from the board? Ms. Dullian?
Thank you. I appreciate these updates, especially after we discussed potentially adding a spring deadline. That would help ensure, give, give the community more guidelines, guidelines and clarification around this policy. Understanding that we must approve, that a, that a school must begin operation, even if they missed the deadline for October first. You know, I'm going to speak in support of that addition of the January first. I think that, however, I, understanding that for every single charter school that is in existence right now, it's been a collaborative process, working with that APC, working with, working with their application and also working with the submission timeline. So understanding that, if we can assume that we will continue to have that collaborative process working with charter applications, which I would hope that we do. It's, I, I appreciate it that we added in the second part there where the district recommends submitting an application before October first. So it's very clear that this is for the, for the sake of proposing a, a very successful school, getting that application in before October first is ideal. My question is, the September first date still feels a little wonky to me because it says that by September first of each school year, the district administration will announce the deadline to apply for the establishment of a charter school to begin operation at the start of the following school year. And then we go right into October first. Why can we not just say that October first is our recommended deadline? Why do we have to add the September first in there? That's, that, that to me is confusing.
Dr. Minert?
Yeah, the September first is state statute. So that portion has to be within our policy and we have to follow that. And I acknowledge, you know, the, the October timeline adds another date in there. But I do think September first would be, it wouldn't be my recommendation to align just to September first and move, you know, the date from October back because of schools starting October does give everybody, both the board and the charter, potential charter group, time to work through and submit that application. September first would be a really quick kind of application deadline in terms of the start of a new school year.
I have a follow-up. Follow-up, Ms. Dullian?
So, so if I'm hearing that, if I'm understanding what you're saying correctly and if I look at the statute then, so the statute and the law that was passed acknowledges that deadlines, that there shall be a deadline established by local school districts to, for a charter school to apply for the following year. However, we must hear an application at any time throughout the year. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I think you categorized kind of the push and pull of that statute perfectly.
Okay. Well, it, it, then I'm going to, you know, I, I'm very pleased with the edits and I'm very pleased at where we landed for this first reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dullian. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Dorn?
It seems in terms of our discussion, these would be appropriate now, although I may come back to them once we add a motion on the table. I have major concerns about this policy as, as revised. One of the major ones is that in actu- in actuality, I see paragraph one and paragraph two as contradictory. On one hand, paragraph one is saying that an application can be submitted anytime and they could begin operation that fall. So we could get an application in May and they could open up in August, according to paragraph one. Paragraph two says opposite of that. It says that if it's after October one, then we're saying it can't open until sometime mid-year or later. Suggesting the possibility of a mid-year becomes very problematic in terms of operations and in terms of educational decisions and impacts, et cetera. So it's either one or the other. Paragraph one is what it is, or it's not. The, I would suggest that the last part of the first sentence in paragraph one be deleted, starting with the word "prior to the school year" during which the proposed charter school would begin operation. Delete that section and make it very clear. An application can be submitted at any time during the school year. And I do want to underscore that it says "school year", which we then define. So we're not dealing with something in the middle of the summer when people are not available to engage. In line with that, then when we talk about applications and since the law says by September one, we have to announce our deadlines, which implies that they are deadlines for submissions and how they would be played. So I like, I'm fine with the, the September one, but I think we need to make clear that there are two deadlines. And we may or may not want to say October one in policy. We may just want to say that we're setting the deadline. That's in accord with the September one requirement or by September one requirement by the state that we, we set the deadline. So I would say that, you know, first bullet would be application, applications submitted before the deadline, possibly October one or it could be November one or October fifteen, whatever it is, whatever it's announced. If approved by the school board, may begin operation at the start of the next school year. So according to law, we have to set a deadline. We set a deadline when they would start for the immediate following, next school year. Second bullet would be applications submitted after the deadline. If, if approved by the school board, we may not begin operation until the subsequent school year. Okay? So that if someone does come, they'd say, hey, we're, we're ready to put in an application. Might be April, I'm just picking a month. And we would hear it. They, they, they want to know if we would approve their application. And they would start basically a year later. They would not start that August. They would start the following August. So it's clear with state law, we are accepting applications anytime during the year, during the school year. Okay? And I think that I really like that piece of definition in here, but that we are setting a deadline. So, you know, for a variety of reasons, budgeting and planning, staffing, et cetera, et cetera. That would start the same school year, or the following school year, immediate following. But if you come after that deadline, we will make a decision. But that would start the subsequent school year. So I am very concerned in the contradictory nature of paragraph one and two, and I'm looking for solutions to that. But I also need, if we are setting a deadline, what happens before that deadline and what happens after?
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. To administration, regard, if I'm understanding correctly- regard, i- if I'm understanding correctly, what Mr. Doran is proposing there actually would not be legal, because the statute says that we have to now accept an application at any time during the year for the, for the following year. Which means that if we put a deadline on there with the subsequent year, that means we're actually doing it for the year after, and that's not what statute says. Is that correct, or am I misinterpreting?
That's correct. The only caveat to that, that I'm not sure if Mr. Doran was getting to you, is because we define school year, if, for instance, an application comes in June 1st, then Mr. Doran's terminology in subsequent year could potentially be in play, because it's outside of that school year. So then you would kick, you know, a full school year, you know, that the charter would not operate, and then they would operate in the fall. But, you know, we're trying to make the policy as clear to potential charters as possible. I don't think that the first couple sentences or paragraphs are in conflict with each other. I think they both can be true. And as we talked about in the work session, the, the, the statute itself is somewhat contradictory. And so we're trying to create a policy where both things can be true, where, you know, the state is saying that you have to accept applications all year round. The district administration has to announce the deadline, but that we still maintain local control in terms of when that school opens the following year. And that's why the January date comes in. And I think it's also important to note that, that January date, it's until after January 1st. So it doesn't have to be January 1st, it could be after that date. And in working collaboratively with charter groups, I think most charter groups would decide to kick it to the subsequent year, but that would be their choice. Because as the district, we would have to give them the opportunity to operate that following school year.
So before we go to Ms. Maple, I think that if this is something the board would want to entertain for this, then I would want to put this document back into work session to run it through legal, or maybe push to another first reading, so that we could possib- Ms. Maple, you go ahead. You seem to wanna go off of what I'm saying, so you go right on ahead.
I think that, that, that legal has evaluated this and given us that suggestion already. And I agree that what Mr. Doran suggested makes the most sense, and unfortunately violates the new statute. So legal took that and came back with a policy that allows us to follow state statute without setting ourselves up for complete disaster. So it amends our policy to be in line with state law, and then creates a new timeline that would prevent a charter application from coming in after October 1st, that would upend our budgeting process. So yes, it would be, a school starting in January 1st would be incred- it would be difficult if, if a charter decided they wanted to try to do that, that they wanted to try to, what, they'd have to hire new teachers? Like, all of the things that would come into play in trying to establish a school January 1st. I think legal intentionally chose that because it allows us to follow our policy, but creates a scenario where it would make the most sense for the charter school and the district for everybody to decide to wait. And then it doesn't, you know, we've already, if an application comes in after October 1st, by the time we're hearing the application, we're already in our budget cycle. We're already working on our budgets, we're already just, you know, doing the big decisions, making the big decisions. And so it doesn't get in the way of the budgeting process. And then on top of that, if we had already passed a budget, doesn't force us to then risk financial instability by allowing something to move forward that we didn't budget for. So I agree, the language, I wish that we could word it the way Mr. Doran suggested. I think that makes far more sense. And unfortunately, the statute doesn't seem to allow for that. So I appreciate that legal came up with an alternative that allows us to protect the district's financials and also stay within, be following the law.
Thank you, Ms. Maple. Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Thank you. I just wanna speak in support of the, of the way that it's written. I don't have a problem with understanding it. I don't think that a charter applicant is going to have a problem understanding it. I think it's very clear that if they apply at a certain time, they have an opportunity to start the following year. And I'm glad that we put a January 1st in there, because it's kind of a, it deters them almost from doing that. So that's the idea. Like, you get to start, but you get to start in January, and who would do that if they want success? So I kind of appreciate that, because it does follow the law, but yet it pushes and says, eh, it's really not the best idea. So then they push it to the fall, most likely if they are going to be shooting for success. I, I, I really think that the wording is, is very good. I think it's sound, and I will support the first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard. Ms. Julian?
Yeah, I wanna speak to something that we, that we spoke about during the work session, which is the importance of the timeliness of us moving forward with updating our policy. So we know that this, that HB 57 was passed into law, that this is important for us to update, and I am in full favor of, of supporting this. I also agree that what Mr. Doran is suggesting makes wonderful sense. And I will speak to the staffing challenges of staffing a school mid-year and what that could do to potentially moving staff from one school to another, and also with the union contracts, that is, that the reality is, you know, that there's minimal opportunities for our represented teachers to move around mid-year. So, you know, the likelihood of, of success of January 1st, unless they, a, a school was bringing on an entirely new staff, you know, that's, that's definitely something that we need to, I, I appreciate us having that in there, and that's legal guidance, and I would trust what our legal guidance is there. And it also is in accordance with the, with the statute and with the law. The second piece, which is on the, the second page, I'm sorry, I'm saying second piece, but the second page of this application, I think is very important, because when a charter school opens, it's part of a district. So it's not a private school that's just operating independently on their own. It's a, it's a part of a educational offering, offering within the district, and it becomes a option within the district. And so it's really important to think about the bearing on the district as a whole. And I thank Ms. Maple for bringing up budgetary implications, because it's not just the budgetary implications, it's also staffing implications, transportation implications, if there is transportation offered to charters at that time, which not long ago we had that. So I am supportive of this. I think it's really important that we move forward relatively quickly. If I can, with one question. We are, if we move forward to second reading, if this pass, passes to second reading, and then this policy is adopted at our next meeting, which is, I believe, the second, what happens, because we've, it's already passed September 1st. So what happens with announcing a deadline for a charter? Can the district move forward with announcing that deadline before we have a meeting? And again, there's a lot of assumptions in that. But, but how do we move forward with the community? Because I think the most important thing is that we are, continue to be clear and concise and transparent and collaborative with the community, because we know that there are several different groups in our community right now that are hoping to bring charter applications forward. So which one was pulled from our agenda just recently? So how do we make sure that those communities receive the guidance that they're looking for? Because right now, state statute is very contradictory.
Yeah, I think it's a great question. I would work with legal counsel following this meeting to prepare what that announcement would be. And I would make sure that the board is aware of what that announcement is, and the community as well.
Mr. Doran?
It was, I appreciate this conversation, because I think it's one that needs to be had. It was suggested that my suggestions, though, though good, might be considered illegal. And I'd like to refute that. There is nothing illegal about them. We have not gotten a legal opinion even. And we do not know what, if it was brought to a question, how a court might rule. So there's nothing illegal about it, any more than even putting in a, a January 1 date within this, because there is nothing in the law that suggests that as the date. The clearest piece seems to be that we will accept applications all year, all school year, and that there may be discussion regarding whether all of those, at whatever time, they are being addressed for operation at the next school, school year, beginning of the next school year. The confusing piece is when the law also says we have to designate a, a deadline. So the question is, a deadline for what? The law, as best I understand it, is silent. So we're trying to figure out what might be the intent of the legislature, what might be good educational practice. And so my suggestions, I would be happy to have them submitted to our, our, our legal advisors. And as, in their own words, have often said, they give legal advice, they give an opinion. They don't determine the law, but they try to give us the best way to do it. And I, and I think that, you know, rather than casting whether something is legal or illegal before we've even gotten that input of, of an opinion, we, we should take the time to do that. I am very, very concerned, because, yes, we may have a difference of opinion, but I do find the two paragraphs contradictory. One says anytime, and as written says anytime, and they can start that immediate fall, start of the new school year. Whereas in the second one with the deadline, we're saying a deadline, well, no, you can't. If you get in by the deadline, you can start. If you come in after the deadline, then you can't start at the beginning, but you can start potentially in the middle. Which we, I, at this point, I'm not going to repeat all, I mean, several problems have been raised on that. And so, about that. And we don't know that that has any other legal grounding than saying they would start the subsequent school year, which minimizes educational disruption, budgetary disruption, because otherwise we have to say, oh, we're gonna say, you know, $2 million, whatever the, the figure would be. We, we will hold on to that until January sometime or after, but neither one. So anyway, bottom line is, I think mine, and I would be, has good substance in terms of the law, and I would be happy to have it. And I would, not just happy to have it, I would recommend that we suggest that to legal, because that might be an aspect they didn't look at.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Thank you. Hang on one second, I got off the wrong page. If we were to move this forward, and then we were to have a second reading, the second, the next meeting that we have scheduled is on the 2nd of September? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. In order to comply, since this is already law, and we need to announce by September 1st what our deadline is for the official September, or August start, in the proper time of, of a school starting, would it be prudent for us to, if we want to pass this tonight, then to schedule another session before September 2nd, so that we have somewhat of an emergency meeting? Some, I don't know, an extra meeting in order to get this passed before September 1st, so that we announce our deadline, so that we're not hamstrung for the rest of the year? Because this is already law. So if we don't get it in writing and someone applies in November, we are obligated to start them in August, instead of having them wait until January. So I've been just wanting to kind of push that a little bit, and I don't know who I'm asking. I don't know, Mrs. Burnett, if I'm asking you, or if I'm asking Mr. Minat, I don't know.
You have to be asking both of us. My immediate reaction would be, no, we wouldn't need to do that, but I, maybe I would be wrong there?
I don't think that we would necessarily need to do that. I think it's well within administrative role to announce what that deadline would be, especially since we have past practice with an October 1st deadline. But, you know, the board can call special meetings at their pleasure, and so if they wanted to take that up, they certainly could do that as well.
I think Ms. Carol Hubbard's point would be that we wouldn't necessarily have this before us as a second reading yet. So to enact it, we would need that second reading. Would, would that just prohibit you from making that announcement, I guess is the question?
No, it wouldn't.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So no, Ms. Carol Hubbard, I do not believe we would need to have a special meeting to be able to do a second reading, as Dr. Minat could use his abilities to implement that deadline.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So if there are no further questions at this time, I would like to bring the motion forward and then open it up for public testimony.
I'd like to move to approve the first reading, the public hearing, and advancement to a second reading, and vote of Board Policy 935.1, Charter Schools, Establishment of Charter Schools.
I second. It's been moved and seconded. We will now open it up for public testimony. Is there anyone wishing to testify on this policy? Seeing nobody, public testimony is now closed, and we will come back to the board. Board, do we have any other questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Burgess?
Uh, thank you. This is hopefully a small and easy thing. If I can just get back to my place. The, the second to last, or the last paragraph in the policy, first sentence says, notes the detrimental impact on the district's budget. And I just, this is maybe a question to administration, or the board, for discussion. But I'm, I'm thinking, impact to the budget is one thing, but operations are also important. Do we want to add anything there about impacts, detrimental impacts to district operation in general?
You certainly could. I mean, I think you'd list a number of things, but operations, I think, would be a good addition to the policy.
I, I see a bunch of head shakes, so what I'm-
Another place to add this to, in the previous paragraph, just throwing that out there.
Well, and I'm, I'm seeing a bunch of consensus with head shakes, so I'm wondering if we could just implement that without a motion, as there is consensus to add that? Or do we need to, would you feel more comfortable with a motion to amend? Okay, we have consensus there, so if you could add district operations, is that correct? Yeah, if we could add that to the policy, we have consensus from the board to do that.
Okay, thank you.
In those two places?
Two places? Go ahead, Mr. Burgess.
Yeah, so both the second to last and the last paragraphs, end of the first sentence of each of those, just add and opera, or, or, sorry, or operations.
I'll give her a second to implement that. Is there anything further from the board? Mr. Dorn?
In the nature also of Mr. Burgess's suggestion, I would suggest in the title that we, uh, add the phrase at the end, "Application Submission", so that the title would actually be Charter Schools, Establishment of Charter Schools, Application Submission, because that's what, we have several that are Charter Schools, Establishment of Charter Schools, we have several policies. And they have another breakdown, but this one doesn't. And this is specific to application submission, so I would just add that.
Would there be any objection from administration on that?
Not at all.
Board agree? Okay, we're good to do that. Anything further from the board? Mr. Dorn?
Okay, I'm going to be voting against this. The, I think that adding that January date in there minimally is very distracting. It also promotes, or implies, a educational detriment. It's operationally problematic, and I think, in, in my opinion, it is, would be unsound practice to simply open a brand-new school mid-school year. It's not required by state law as a specific, but it does present real difficulties. And based on, as I said, I, my feeling that it promotes unsound policy and practice, that I cannot go for something that is detrimental to the education and operation of our school district, and, and schools themselves, and the possible implications on that. So I'll be voting against it. And so, and I, I would like to, whether or not this passes and goes to a second reading, given that there was some support from other board members, at least in the concepts that I was presenting earlier, that through the chair and to the administration, perhaps consideration of, of sending those to running them by legal, and seeing whether they're even in the ballpark, if for a second reading, we wanted to make some adjustments.
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely, Dr. Minor, please do.
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Dorn. When you were going to finish your remarks, I was going to speak to this, and just wanted to say that, you know, there was no ill intent in terms of my description of the policy. And really appreciate you bringing your ideas forward, and bringing possible policy amendments. As we've done throughout this policy, as ideas have come up, we've taken that back to legal, just to see how that might work for the next iteration of the policy. And I'd be happy to take back your thoughts and see, you know, what legal's guidance might be on them, and if we could work some of those ideas and thoughts into the policy for a second reading if it passes. And so I just wanted to make sure you knew that there's no ill intent in terms of my statements on the policy tonight.
Yeah, and I want to say, none taken from you or from the board members. That, that, that's the vitality of having a conversation and bringing multiple ideas to the table. So just, if it's in anybody else's mind, yep. I think, I think it's all to the good. We're, we're working together for the benefit of kids, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn, and thank you, Dr. Minor. And I also would like to just know, you know, if legal has any opinions about anything Mr. Dorn has said. So thank you for being willing to do that. We will go to Ms. Doolian.
Thank you, and I will speak to why I am supporting this motion that's on the table. And I think it's important to state that, whereas I fully support what Mr. Dorn is bringing forward, and I agree that opening a school mid-year is not an educational best practice. I also recognize that our job is to provide policy in accordance with what is law. And there are two sentences in here that, that, one in particular here, about the application to establish a charter school may be submitted at any time, submitted, I want to say that again, submitted, at any time during the school year, prior to the school year, during which the proposed charter school would begin operating. However, in the same breath, that law, that statute states that a school district will announce a deadline to apply for the establishment of a charter school to begin operation at the start of the following school year. I recognize that the statute is confusing. What I appreciate about this policy is that it is, what I view, the best legal advice that we have received as to how to balance the confusion that's written within state law. It is incredibly important, in my mind, we have two that we know of, that we've heard of, groups that want to start collaborating with us on charter school applications. I think it is critically important that we provide them with clarity that is legally provided from our legal counsel, that allows them to pursue those applications in a very timely matter. We're already getting close to, and it's, it's mid-August. It's going to be October 1st before we know it. So I think it's incredibly important that we move forward with what we have in front of us, which I see as the clearest possible way forward with a very muddy state statute. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doolian. Anything further from the board? Seeing none at this time, Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the vote on the first reading of BP 935.1?
Mr. Wade? Taking a vote for the policy? Okay, I can't hear you, and so maybe your mic is off. Um, let's see, Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Colonel Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
No.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Doolian?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Thank you. Moving on, we will move into Board Policy 935.23. Board Policy 935.23 is proposed to be revised, and is before the board for a first reading by administration. Ms. Dillard, back to you.
Thank you, President Burnett. This is 935.23, Charter School Contract with the School Board. This was another change that came from House Bill 57, Alaska Statute 1403-255C, lists provisions that must be included in a contract between a charter school and a local school board. There's about 15, 16 things on that list in the statute. House Bill 57 expanded that list to include a new provision that each charter school contract must contain a clause providing that the local school board may only terminate a contract under the standards and procedures established in AS 1403-256. So the minimum legal requirement to comply with House Bill 57 is to add to this board policy the reference to the provisions required by that statute, which we did, it was not in the pol, in the current, it's not in the current policy. So it's referenced both as a, as a legal reference up top here. And then we added, in addition to following our board policy and regulations and provisions required by AS 1403-255C.
Thank you, Ms. Dillard. Questions from the board? Mr. Dorn?
Okay, I have several that are more, I think, clarifications that I understand what's here. In the first sentence, when we talk that the application of a charter school must include a proposed contract with the school board, is that drafted by the applicant, by the district? Does it matter? I'm just trying to avoid confusion there, what that understanding is, so that, because we have contracts with charter schools that have much in common with a few adjustments according to the individual school. But mostly they're in common, and whether, I'm just looking for clarity so that they, an applicant doesn't have to recreate the wheel. And we have decades of experience in, in working with charter schools, which helps any new applicants also.
Go ahead, Dr. Minor.
Yeah, I can speak.
Sorry, getting late.
Totally, it's been a big day with the start of school. So I can start the reply to this, and then Diana, my, Ms. Dillard, might have some thoughts. But I think what that first line gets at as including that collaborative piece with charters to ensure as they're creating their initial charter application, that they're considering different things that we might have in contracts for specific charters, so that it's not just a boilerplate, template, that, you know, a charter group is going to use, that it's very specific to the operations and different logistical things that that specific charter group will need to have within their charter application itself. Or their, you know, their, their overarching charter, which gets it, we've talked about this before, some people use the term "contract" and "charter interchangeably", and this is specifically talking about charters, like the charter itself.
Follow-up?
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Dorn.
Okay. I think there's a confusion, you just added to the confusion in, in my mind. This is actually talking about the contract, not the charter. And, and I think this was one of the discussions we had in the work session, that the focus of this is the contract, not the charter.
Yes, I would agree with you, Mr. Dorn. This is about the contract for the charter. There are two other policies that go into the work session process and all of the collaboration that goes into getting that contract approved and charter approved. So I would hesitate to try to dig too much into this policy on what is being addressed in other policies already, but this is about the contract specifically.
Right, yeah, and I'm, because I like the focus on the contract, because that, that has been a point of confusion over the years, that the charter and the contract is very different. We're talking about the contracts that, for instance, we now have five-year contracts. We used to annually renew them or review them. Now they're five-year. So I think it's important that we keep the focus on the contract, not the charter. That perhaps it might be, must include a proposed contract developed in collaboration with the, with the district. I mean, so somebody going in who's talking about, yeah, I might like, we, we might like to start a charter school, they know that right now that that's a collaboration. They don't, for that application, the contract is collaborative, more so even than the, than the charter. That's what they want in accordance with law, et cetera. But the contract is the administrative understanding between the district and that charter school. So I, I think it could be worth, I would put in the hopper, that it could be worth putting that collaborative piece so that an applicant does not think they have to come up with that in order to submit the application itself. They, it's at least a boilerplate.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great clarification. It also, I think, adding that collaboration piece puts into the realm that they don't get to dictate terms of the contract to the school board, so that it's, you know, a give-and-take, back-and-forth with the school board and the district.
Anything further, Mr. Dorn?
Would that be, that it's worth putting in a word, collaborative, or in collaboration with the district, adding that phrase, and include a proposed contract, developed in collaboration with the district? It may not be the final one, because it does provide for revisions as it goes through the process. But that might be, I would suggest that.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Ms. Doolian?
If I may speak to Mr. Dorn's suggestion, I'm in support of that, because anytime that a, you know, your policy is developed, it's rooted, and it's rooted in the practice, which has always been a collaborative process. I think that that's appropriate, so I do support this addition.
May I ask that if we're going to do any more additions, we bring the motion forward? If we're going to make changes, this was about questions. We don't need to make amendments if there's consensus, but we need to bring the motion forward. Ms. Carol Hubbard?
I move to approve the first reading, public hearing, and advancement to a second reading and vote of Board Policy 935.23, Charter Schools Application Procedure for Establishing a Charter School, Charter School Contract with the School Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We will now open it up for public testimony. Is there anybody who wishes to come forward and testify on this policy? Seeing none at this time, public testimony is now closed. We will now come back to the board, and so if there are further questions or changes that would like to be made, now is the time. Mr. Dorn?
Okay, and thanks for the clarification to the process. My question just slid on.
It happens, it's okay, it happens.
You caught me, so good. Question regarding in paragraph three, where it says at the end, the last two sentences, "Any revisions of the terms of the contract may be made only with the approval of the school board and the Charter Schools Academic Policy Committee. The contract will take effect upon the State Board of Education's approval of the application." The clarity that I'm confused there is that the, if there are changes to the contract, that does not have to go to the Board of Educ, State Board of Education?
That's correct.
Okay, and, and I, that was the question that was left for me. I didn't come up with a rewording, or suggestion on a wording for that, but I think that, to bring to the fore, that if administration feels that that is clear enough, or whether, um, I, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that maybe those two sentences could be reversed order. So you have the contract referenced in the first sentence of that paragraph, shall reflect any agreements. It becomes effective upon approval of the application by the State Board, and then if there are any revisions to the contract, that's the last piece. And it doesn't, and it does not go, it does, that's, those revisions just need to go to the, the school board and the ACP. So I would just suggest switching those would avoid any confusion.
Dr. Minor?
Yeah, I think you could do that. I also feel like you could strike that last sentence altogether, because it's somewhat-
Nuanced.
Using and nuanced within this policy that's specifically talking about the contract.
And I'm comfortable either way. I don't know what it is, it's just.
Yeah, I'm seeing head shakes.
I think I would recommend taking it out only because as we saw tonight, there's confusion in talking about contract versus charter. And then you throw in the State Board approval, which the State Board has nothing to do with the local contract that the school board agrees to.
I'm seeing consensus, so we can go ahead and do that. Mr. Dorn, anything further?
Okay, and then just a question. Do we have somewheres else in policy where we encourage the early engagement with the district and potential applicants in those initial developmental stages?
Not that I'm aware of, and I'm not sure if that's in any of the AASB recommended policies that they've created a new article or chapter that we're going to be taking up as a board. But Ms. Dillard, are you aware of any current policies or policies we might bring forward that has some of that language in it?
I would have to do a little bit of digging, but I think we do have some language on letters of intent. That's actually administrative regulation and the process of getting that letter of intent early. And then administration support in working with the charter school to complete the application. But I, I think that's administrative regulation, but I could double check that.
Okay, okay, follow up?
Follow up, Mr. Dorn?
So I, I think that would be good and I would, through the chair and administration, to perhaps consider that we look at something that and maybe if that letter of intent by itself encouraging, if we had some policy or statement upfront about that. Somewhere, if it's not a ready place, that it could be advantageous for us to look at at some point. Because it really encourages that early collaboration and, and, and conversation that, that really helps when it comes down to actually putting in a, an application and, and can help avoid some misunderstandings and, and problems that have to be solved after the fact, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Is there anything else from any board members in, oh, Ms. Dillard?
So we do have a policy, and I just want to note that the notice of intent language is something that we'll have to address in administrative regulation and how that aligns with all of these submission deadlines that we're talking about. But Board Policy 935.2 does say, "After receiving a notice of intent, the superintendent shall establish an administrative committee to meet with the charter school representatives to review the application procedures and requirements." So that is board policy.
Go ahead, Mr. Dorn.
Could you repeat the number of that policy?
Uh, 935.2.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dillard. Anything further from the board? Seeing nothing at this time, Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the vote on Board Policy 935.23?
Uh, gonna try, Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you. Colonel Campbell?
Yes.
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Julian?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
This is on as, as the adjustments, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dillard, for your time tonight. Moving on into our information and reports, we will move into our FMD Construction Recap. Our Executive Director of Facilities Management Department, Jay Kerian, will offer a summary of summer construction projects. And we'll give her just a moment. Good evening, Ms. Kerian. Great to see you.
Good evening. Hope everyone had a good summer. I'm here to give you a quick summer construction update. FMD's been pretty busy over this summer. Okay, so first of all, we have our borough capital improvement. So these two items, the Lathrop High School and the University Park Elementary Site improvements, they were initially put forward in the capital improvement project back in 2021. And then they were selected for capital improvement for this year. So first of all, we have the Lathrop High School kitchen upgrade. The kitchen got a complete remodel. There was mechanical upgrades as well as replacement of all equipment. It also is now ADA compliant and they have a new office, or, you know, they reconfigured the office space. And they also made use of the mechanical systems in that area. The cost estimate for that project was 2.2 million and the contractor for that was Callahan Construction. Second, we have the North Pole High School boiler replacement. Last year, that was an emergency fund that the borough used their KIP money for. The project added a natural gas line and it also replaced our old boilers. The cost estimate for that project was 900,000 and the contractor for that project was Aaron Plumbing and Heating. University Park Elementary Site Improvements, this project updated the parking lots. It also upgraded the playground surface. You'll only notice that it was only one of the primary playgrounds that was resurfaced. And it also improved the sidewalks to meet the current ADA requirements. That cost estimate was $2 million and the contractor for that was Troused Construction. We had two school district facilities projects that we did that came from our Impact Aid money. First of all, we recoded the Weller Elementary Fire Tank. The school sprinkler systems holding tank has deteriorated over the past years and therefore Weller did experience some leakage. This year, we recoded the interior of that tank. Hopefully that's going to give us another 10 years. And I do plan to put in a KIP project to replace that entire tank eventually. That cost estimate was 109,000 and the contractor for that was Yukon Fire Protection. We also did the West Valley High Roof Patch and Repair. We only did a very small portion. You may have heard that there was some leakage over on the science wing area. So we had a company come in and replace and did a patchwork for that. That cost estimate was $79,854,000. And we contracted with Weatherproofing Technologies and they're part of the Tremco Construction Products Group. And finally, we had a deed capital improvement, which was state-funded. And that was for our Tannanah Middle School exterior door replacement. That renovation was part of last year's renovation for the Phase 2 exterior renovation where we replaced the EFS and the windows. And then this year, we replaced the doors. That cost estimation was 350,000 and the contractor for that was Callahan Construction. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kerian. I'm gonna kick it off if that's okay. First off, I wanted to say that I watched the Tannanah Middle School thing go down all summer long and I couldn't believe how efficient that was and how quickly they got it taken care of. I remember seeing it all taped up and them replacing windows or, or doors, I mean. And then like a week later, the school was done and it looked brand new. And so just kudos to that, that, that was really awesome to see happen like that. I do have a question though in regards to the North Pole High Boiler Replacement. I know that that was something that we had been looking at doing. My only question is, what is left of that project to still be done? Is there still a couple issues there? And what does the heat look like now since that has been done there at North Pole High?
So we do still have some mechanical upgrades. The school is still have a pneumatic system, which means it's not controlled by a computerized system. And so that still needs to be replaced. We still have a lot of piping that needs to be replaced. The school is still running through water. Our preference is to change it out to glycol. While we do have new boilers and that will help make sure that we had reliable boilers, it doesn't help with the controlling the heat in the building still. So there's still some mechanical challenges that we'll be facing.
Thank you, Ms. Kerian. I appreciate that. I had Ms. Julian and then Ms. Carol Hubbard and then Mr. Dorn.
Yeah, thank you so much for this. And it has been a lot of work this summer. So thank you for, for managing that over the summer and, and for the update today. My question is specifically about U Park, the ADA requirements and updates. And a couple parents had brought this to my attention to ask that I move forward with a question. So I'm, I appreciate that engagement with the community. You mentioned that the playground surface was the primary playground. Is that, is the sped playground also going to be updated?
I know, I just spoke to Allison yesterday, actually. My plan is to put a project through the disc cycles KIP because we weren't able to get the sped playground or the kindergarten playground. However, we did add some ADA swings in, in the new construction that we just updated over the summer.
Okay, okay, great. And if I can have a follow up?
Go ahead, Ms. Julian.
Okay. And then the other, another concern that had come forward was the, the lip in the concrete by the door that the ADA students arrive to school from the sped buses. Is that, has that been addressed or is that going to be in the next kind of round of KIP?
I would have to double check. I know that they were addressing all the sidewalks and they were actually in progress to doing that. I have to double check if that is part of that project.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much. And you can put me back in the queue.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Julian. We will go to Ms. Carol Hubbard.
You can just have the, the, the mic back. You asked my question about the boiler and I just wanted to say thank you for the report.
I read your mind. We will go to Mr. Dorn first.
Thank you, thank you for this summer project update. So my question is, you answered a little bit with the North Pole High Boiler Repla-, Boiler Replacement, but I do have a follow up with that. Have all of these been completed, these projects?
These, these projects that I'm presenting, yes. Those are all completed.
Okay, and with that completion, we have cost estimates. And I assume there are probably some final bills being done, but are we looking at below estimate? Overestimate? The, what I'm concerned about is interested in is actual costs. Are we trending above or below the estimates?
These are pretty on par with our estimate. We kept it very close to our estimate. So they're, they're pretty on par.
And follow up on the North Pole High one is, so we may have some problems and your indications of moderating heat throughout, but there is heat in the building for the, for the year?
Yes, there will be reliable boilers for sure, yes.
Great. And then maybe I, you can put me back.
Put you back in the queue. You got it. Do we have any other board members with questions before we go to Ms. Julian? Seeing none at this time, Ms. Julian, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I was gonna speak, I was gonna ask about the cost estimates as well. So I'll just say, congratulations. I'm looking forward to seeing that in kind of a budget report. But knowing, I know exactly how difficult it is right now to stay on, stay within your cost estimates, especially in an environment where our, our costs are changing so rapidly in the world of construction. So great work. That's not an easy feat right now. My question pertains to the KIP and it's not necessarily on, on what we've been presented to tonight, but it's looking forward. I know that there was a lot of conversation this spring around the capital improvement plans. I know that we're headed into that season again. And if I may ask a question that's a little out of alignment with the presentation for the administration, but can you speak a little bit to the KIP and the process moving forward? I know that there was feedback from the borough that they wanted more detailed KIP requests versus the overall request that we were, that we were putting forth. But I know that our facilities, and especially as we've reestablished our footprint. So our facility footprint, that was a big deal that we've done, of course, this last year and the year prior with consolidating our schools. Now, I especially want to make sure that we're looking to our schools and making sure that we're investing in the schools that we have and that we're operating right now to make sure that those maintenance requests are and facilities are maintained at a level that really helps us even potentially modernize our, our facilities. So if you can speak to that process a little bit.
Yep, I can do that. So this year, the new KIP's ambition for the borough actually coincides with the same date as the state, so I'm working with both of them simultaneously right now. So August 31st is our deadline. I already had a meeting with Borough just to kind of give them an indication of some of the projects that we are proposing. And they appreciate that we did break it down. So for example, in the past, I've had four phases of renovation and they're kind of big chunks of 10 million to, you know, 19 million dollar. So what I've done is I've broken those out to just say roofing, just windows, just playground. So very specific, if it's a mechanical upgrade and it's DDC, it's very specific to just DDC. So that would amount to about $2 million instead of trying to do the whole renovation as a whole. Because I know that the borough did say that they will give us a, you know, some sum, I don't know how much. Hopefully they'll give us a good amount. But I'm hoping that we can fall within the categories that we're proposing, a little bit smaller chunks of projects rather than the big overall phase projects that I've done in the past.
Follow up, Mrs. Julian? Oh, Dr. Minor?
Is that okay? So just to add on to, I guess, the pieces that have changed. So a big thank you to the borough for allowing more voice from the district in the ranking process. So we're actually gonna be at the table and have some voice in terms of how projects are ranked for our district and throughout the community, which we haven't necessarily had in the past. And then that clear communication from the assembly to district administration that in the past, we have had very detailed submissions, but they've asked us to break those, those projects down into smaller amounts. And I think the North Pole Boiler is a good example of that. That initial submission, I can't remember, was millions of dollars. Do we still need to get to that work at some point in time? Yes. But prioritizing some of the things where there won't be heat in the building if this boiler doesn't get fixed. And so we are trying to break those down into smaller chunks so they really understand our priorities here at the district and there can't be further confusion down the road.
Another follow up, Mrs. Julian?
Yeah, just to follow up on, and I, and I know that this might be too much to ask right now, but do you have an, since you're in the process right now of working towards August 31st deadlines for both the state and the borough, but do you have an idea of the entirety of our facilities? And like a ballpark range of, of how much money we're looking at when it comes to all of our facility needs? It, it just would be helpful to.
Terms of deferred, you're speaking of deferred maintenance?
Correct.
It's about 353 million dollars.
Can you state that again?
Sorry, I may. It's about 350 million dollars, but that's, that's looking at the whole, overall 20 years projection.
Okay.
I had the same thoughts, Ms. Julian. Dr. Minor?
So to build on that, I, I think it's an important number and this is something that we've been stressing from the district side, that we value the contributions, obviously, from our local municipality and trying to upkeep our buildings. But there is a real need from the state to invest in schools, not only here in Fairbanks, but around the state. A lot of districts are in similar scenarios where we have aging buildings that have not been kept current or modernized or even to the point where roofs are being maintained. And so it is a significant issue for our district. A lot of times we talk about operating budgets, but there's this capital budget issue that is creeping up on the district as well that is going to need attention from the state.
With that, I just want to really say thank you to our Borough Assembly for coming in on some of the costs that we've needed, especially like the North Pole Boiler and of course our state as well. It's a, it's a lot of maintenance to take care of. I do have a question in regards to the West Valley High Roof Patch and Repair. Maybe I missed it. I'm just curious on how long that is estimated to last us with that repair?
Uh, we actually just met with Tremco and that should last us for at least 10 years.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further questions from the board? Mr. Dorn?
Regarding the borough KIP, could you just remind us, there's the KIP and then there was a fund, and I can't remember the official name of it, but lapsed monies went into that was, that has been used to fund some of the things. Is that still separate or is it part of the KIP? Was it rolled into the KIP?
I think that's a Borough question. I believe they, those are separate.
I'm sorry?
I believe that their facility reserve money is separate from the KIP.
Right, okay, thank you. I did have two other questions. One is the U Park Playground Update. If it's to make that playground ADA compliant currently, does that mean that we are looking down, that we're going to need to do something similar to the other playgrounds throughout the district? Or is that specific to U Park and some of the programs that they serve?
Move, my, my plan, our, our department's plan is to move forward with all ADA compliant playgrounds, so all the mat services.
Okay, follow up. Then at approximately a $2 million cost for each, is that, those will all be KIP state? What are we anticipating where the funding is going to come to do that?
So I've been also looking at grant projects, if there's possible grant projects out there. And I'm trying to break them out into kindergarten, primary, intermediate, so we're not doing all two. It's not going to cost 2 million all at one go. I mean, if I break it up into different groups, so the intermediate playground is approximately about 800,000, 600,000, 400,000, etc. So the plan is to make them all that same surface as U Park. And then I'm just finding, trying to find different funding sources for being able to get those playgrounds. I know like some of our schools, some of the playgrounds are still original to the building.
Okay.
Another follow up, Mr. Dorn?
Yes, relative to the contractor at U Park, only because I had personal experience with them. We take our grandkids there. And the contractors, all the workers there were excellent. I watched them with other kids explaining some of the, just taking a moment to explain some of the things they were doing, but also talking with adults, my wife, myself, different times, and just giving, kind of giving us an update and, and telling the kids, oh, what's coming, what's going to be done. So kudos to them in terms of that public interfacing that's there. And then I just have a last question.
One last question, go ahead, Mr. Dorn.
When we, when I looked at the Lathrop Kitchen Project, which I know has been greatly talked about for several years, it did bring to mind, relative to it, when we moved the Bridge Program over to Lathrop, there was great conversation and some early assurances of putting in a kitchen in that unit, that space for kids. Could you just give us an update is, there may have been some changes in how that was being addressed by Bridge. But anyway, give us an update to where that.
Yeah, I can have some initial thoughts on that and then Jay might have some more details because I know she's had conversations with Ms. Hall, who's our Special Education Director. I think this came up last year in conversation. The space is currently meeting the needs of the program. I know initially there was a talk about a redesign of that space. Initial estimates came in pretty high in terms of the work that would need to be done and that would need to be probably put through the KIP process or, you know, securing other grants that the district has not secured at this point in time. But I'd like to turn it over to Jay to see if that did make it in a KIP proposal and where we're at with it currently.
After speaking with our sped department, it, they did say that it is currently meeting needs and so we don't have any plans as of now to update the kitchen in the Bridge Program area.
Thanks for the update.
Anything further from the board? Seeing none at this time, thank you, Ms. Carrion, for your update.
Move to suspend the rules to extend the meeting and finish our business.
A second. Rules have been suspended, thank you, Mr. Burgess. Up next, we have our achievement after high school. I have been waiting for this all night. Senior Research Analyst, Dr. Ellis Ott, will make the third of a series of presentations on what measures we can use to define achievement. This presentation will focus on achievement after high school as measured through college enrollment and graduation. A new post-secondary data dashboard will also be introduced. Dr. Ott, good to see you.
Okay, we'll wait a moment for it to pull up. But yes, thank you, School Board members. Excited about this third part of a multi-part series on achievement. As was mentioned, this is the achievement report after high school. Again, I am Ellis Ott, I am the Senior Research Analyst for the School District. So the first part's basically a review on what is achievement. That's if something's accomplished either through ability, effort, or courage. And I'm going to give a couple of examples. Receiving at least a 3.0 cumulative GPA, a B average in high school, that can be considered an achievement. Qualifying for the Alaska Performance Scholarship is an achievement. Graduating from college, that is an achievement. Enlisting in military service is an achievement. Employment is an achievement. So these sequences I'm going to go through in the rest of this report. So again, with review, let's look to the grade point average. All high school students have a cumulative grade point average. And the reason I'm pointing that out is because that's not the case for all of our achievement metrics. For example, in assessment, if you have a student in 12th grade, you might have to go back to 9th grade to look at their English, Languages Arts, or Math Assessment results. We also have students that attend correspondence programs that have lower participation rates in assessments. But when it comes to the grade point average, there's rare exception that we do not have grade point averages for students as long as they've completed at least one semester of school and high school. About half of our high school graduates had at least a B average, that achievement that I referenced, of a 3.0 or higher. And that particular achievement is predictive of college graduation six years later. Okay, it could be four years, five years, or six years. The group of students that achieve that, they are three times more likely to graduate from college than the students that don't achieve that. So it's 58% versus about 18%. The accuracy is about 68%, which is pretty good concerning the fact that we're predicting something that happens much, much later for students. My expectation would be the college GPA, the GPA they achieve in college would be a higher predictor in terms of accuracy. If you look at all the Fairbank students, wherever they go, across the world, any college, the group of students that do graduate, close to 90% of them achieves that at least B cumulative GPA. So that's grade point average. The next is the Alaska Performance Scholarship. So high school graduates meet that performance scholarship by meeting a curriculum requirement and a minimum GPA or test score, not both. That's with the new Alaska Performance Scholarship. For explicit details about that, that was covered in the prior report, but we can also address that if the board members are interested. The class of 24 and the class of 25 had close to 60%. It was like 58.5 in each of them, somewhere around there, that qualified for that new Alaska Performance Scholarship. So much like GPA, the Alaska Performance Scholarship, students that meet that or not, it's predictive of college graduation. Students that meet it are twice as likely to graduate as students that don't. Okay, the graduation rate's a little bit higher for those that don't meet that. That has to do with GPA. And I'll also note that the data that I'm providing here is based on the old APS. The students that took the new APS, they haven't had enough time to graduate from college yet. So the accuracy is similar and 73% of total college graduates met that APS for Fairbank students. Okay, so we have a brand new post-secondary data dashboard. It's based on more than a decade of graduating classes. It has college graduation rates, college enrollment, and Alaska Performance Scholarship data for our Fairbank students. And I'm going to try to cover a couple of things from that dashboard. This dashboard is publicly available. You can find it on our district website. You can, there's lots of different avenues to get there. And if anyone's having trouble finding it, just let me know, I'll help you get there. And here's the new dashboard on post-secondary outcomes. So I'm going to show a few things to highlight. So the first one is the college graduation rate. It looks at amongst the group of students that enrolled in college. Okay, they had to be enrolled and I look at the percent that complete that within six years of when they graduated from high school. Okay, so the first one says 2007, that's the class of 2007. They have till 2013 to complete certificate, associates, or higher. On average, about 42% of our students do that wherever they go. There's also some comparison groups that you can do. You can do by demographics, but I'm going to quickly focus on the Alaska Performance Scholarship. I was talking about that. What that's showing there is that the students that had the highest scholarship level APS, their graduation rate in college was 79%. Those are our Fairbank students. If they're at level two, it's 55, level three, it's 44, give or take, and 26% as we mentioned before in the report. So I want to point out the APS level three, that's the minimum level, the lowest level. It's about 44%. And I'm going to do something real quick to look at, and I'm going to filter it here. I'm going to try to slow down so people see what I'm doing. By grade point average, because I was talking about the achievement of getting at least a B average. So I'm going in and I'm restricting the group to only those. There. To those that had an A or B average for their cumulative high school GPA. And I point out this metric right here. What that is, is that's the students that did not meet the APS. Okay, students did not meet the APS, but they did acquire that 3.0 GPA or higher. And their college graduation rate was 43%. So it's really close to those that met the APS level three. This is with the, the, the old APS, so to speak. And so when I did the analysis on this, essentially I'm collecting something that essentially argues these students should be qualifying for the APS. And the new APS effectively does do that, very, very close to that, where students can qualify with the GPA, don't necessarily need a test score. And there's multiple reasons for that. One reason might be students might not simply be taking these assessments because there are more and more colleges over time no longer require the SAT or the ACT in the application process. So let me undo that. And then we'll look at college enrollment quick. So we also have a college enrollment rate. What this is looking at is do students enroll in college within two years after graduating? And I've got it from the class of 2007 all the way to the class of 2021. As you can see, the enrollment rate is around 68% in 2007 and it's decreased to around 54% as of 2021. If you look at, I'm going to do a comparison where I do high school GPA. At the top, this blue line here, these are your 4.0 and higher kids. Their college enrollment rate's way more consistent than each group beneath. And it's almost like the higher the GPA, the more consistent the college enrollment rate is. Okay, so it's, you know, it's decreasing a little bit for these B average students. C average students, it's decreasing by even more. Let's go back to the last tab, which is our Alaska Performance Scholarship. Okay, so what's interesting about this is, and I might put some more notes in here in the future, is in 2020, right here, we see this jump from about 28% of students graduates qualifying for the APS to almost 40%. That's in COVID years. That's when the APS where the state waived the state, excuse me, waived the testing requirement. So they didn't need to meet the minimum test threshold for the ACT or the SAT. And so when that happened, the proportion of students qualifying increased dramatically. And so that, that waiver of the testing requirement was in 2020 and 2021, and then it was returned in 2022. And I would note that that is our lowest APS qualification year. It may have to do with over time, ACT and SAT requirements have been, you know, reduced across our nation for requirements for application as well as, you know, students may not have been aware that the, you know, ACT, SAT requirements were now back on in 23, 22 and 23. And then as you can see, the class of 24 and 25, this is the new APS, brand new APS. The curriculum requirement now infuses CTE components to it. It, you know, allows the students to qualify with a GPA or a test score, not both. Okay, so we have substantially more of our students qualifying for this latest APS. Okay, so I'm going to return to the report. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about where this data came from. So we partner with the National Student Clearinghouse. They're a nonprofit organization. They provide this data to us, including, you know, information from the University of Alaska Fairbanks. And they act as a school official on behalf of the school district. They're, they have information on private or public institutions, two-year and four-year, those that issue certificates, associates, etc. It, it's really, really high, the percentage of colleges that participate in this. And there's a little website you can look at to, to get more information. So this is kind of summarizing what I was showing in, in the dashboard. So college enrollment rate around 62%, really high for our higher GPA students. You have a 4.0 GPA on average, 94% enroll in college with two, within two years. Again, the data on the enrollment decrease, but that it was more consistent enrollment for students that either met the APS or met that higher GPA. And amongst our students, as they go out to any colleges, over 60% of those students are enrolling in colleges in Alaska. So as, as you, I've shown in the dashboard, 42% college graduation rate within six years. Really high, 88% if they have a 4.0 GPA. And this data here was talked about earlier. In the dashboard, if you click on, there's a little comparison group that says UA, University of Alaska System. What that's showing is what is the college graduation rate within six years within the entire University of Alaska system? And our, our students going out wherever they go have a higher graduation rate than that UA system. They also have a higher graduation rate than nationwide with four-year open admissions institutions. The reason why we, we look at open admissions is because imagine you're an institution and you take it, you have 100,000 applications and you only accept 1,000 of them. What you're being is you're being very selective because oftentimes those that they then say you, you've been approved to come to our college, they're going to have higher performance on average. And so those institutions will have very, very high graduation rates. But if you're an open admissions, those graduation rates are a lot lower. So University of Alaska System, if you look at, there's a reference in here, their data that they've provided, when they're comparing themselves with other colleges, they do the similar thing. We want to compare ourselves, apples to apples, basically, to comparable institutions that are also open admissions. Okay, so summary, so let's summarize all of that, which is probably a lot to take in. So the majority of our graduates enroll in college within two years. Whether or not they meet the APS or they have that 3.0 GPA or higher is predictive of college graduation. You know, six years later, I mean, that's pretty good concerning how long that is later after that outcome. College graduation rate of our students is higher than the UA system and nationwide, as I mentioned with open admissions, four-year institutions. Uh, as I mentioned with uh open admissions, um, four-year institutions. Uh, recently, close to sixty percent of our uh graduates are qualifying for this new APS. And so we have college enrollment and graduation data to review in the future. And um military service and employment, um, that, that is just as valuable. Um, we just don't have the data on it. Uh, we don't have the information on employment, military service. I have some, um, but not, you know, fifteen years worth. So, um, that leaves it to my last statement is what is success for our students? Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Ott. Uh, this is absolutely fantastic. I um, it's really reassuring to see that we're graduating kids from college as well, that we're actually being successful with what we're doing here, which really kind of blows away any of the other things that people may say out there. So I appreciate this coming forward and thank you. With that, Mr. Burgess.
I'll, I'll echo um that statement. I, I really appreciate having the actual data, although I never had any doubt in my mind that this was the case. Um, but thank you for, for, uh, for putting this together so we can show the, the success um based on these metrics. Um, I just have a quick, hopefully, question. Um, and that's on your last slide. You, you noted that uh, um, we do not have the data on military service or employment. How do we get that data, those data?
So, um, we have some military uh folks, like our um military liaison officers and our military support coordinator. They might be able to help me with that. Um, you know, it, it, it would be another project to get into and then just kind of collect the data and, and then try to incorporate it and provide that to the board and our community. Uh, the employment, I don't know. Uh, I, I, I believe HB fifty, I have to read it again. HB fifty-seven might have a component in there that the Alaska Department of Education, Early Development, will work with the Department of Labor to do precisely that over like a twenty-year period, something like that. I know it was proposed several times. I can't remember if it was in HB fifty-seven itself. At some point, they might report some data out of that, but my guess would be they wouldn't tell us what's going on with Fairbanks. Uh, so, uh, yeah, I'm open for ideas on how to do that on the employment side of things. Um, you know, it's something to think about for sure, yeah.
Following up with that, I know you said that we don't have much data on employment. Do we have data on trades? I know that kind of falls under the same category, but the percentage of people that are maybe not graduating, but they're moving into the trades and they're going into, yeah.
Yeah, same, same kind of thing of, of um, how would I do that? Yeah, something to think about, yeah.
Okay, we have Ms. Dulean.
Thank you so much. I'm going to um pour over the data dashboard. What I'm curious about is if the decline in college enrollment. So it's not, it, it, first of all, I'm so excited that we've, we're able to conclude rooted in data um that our students are, the one that, the one that I really love is that our college graduation rates of Fairbanks students, Fairbanks and North Pole, Salta, Two Rivers, Fox, Goldstream, um, students are higher than the UA system and nationwide. Thank you so much. Um, that is, uh, just, just really important to say that over and over again. When I looked at the drop-offs, though, of college enrollment and college graduation, when you get down to C-level and D-level, D-average students, I'm really curious to see if there is a relation that we could say that perhaps college isn't where those students are going, but you ended in what is success for our students. Is that in? And I'm hoping that we can see some sort of upward correlation to um trades. So, you know, going into, going, like going directly into a trade and working in as, as a journeyman and, you know, competing in our workforce to potentially employment. And I understand how difficult it is go- going to be to, to get that data, but um, I'm hopeful that we can kind of dig in a little bit deeper on those, on those students. It's, it does not surprise me that an A-level student or a B-level student is, is still pursuing college. And I apologize that I pronounce data differently than some people, but that's my Wisconsin accent.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, that, um. Yeah, it's very curious. Is it, in the back of my mind is also, you know, what are the, you know, challenges or, or um impacts of the APS itself? You know, that, that part of the, one of the changes of the APS was increasing the amount that students are getting, you know? There's always that barrier of cost. And how does, how does that play in with uh decisions that students are making?
Mr. Dorn.
I'm going to start out with, wow, kudos. And I think extremely important to both you and Dr. Minert. The, um, I know this has been a tickler of yours for a long time and recognition when actually the state started, um, state law uh said accountability, they had multiple indicators. Currently, we use a very absolute minimum of indicators for that. You've expanded it. You really address what that law said to do is lose multiple, use multiple indicators. So thank you for your time and going into it, pursuing it. Thank you to Dr. Minert for uh supporting it because this is a message that we really need to get out and I will encourage that um we publicize it. Uh, I know we have a small communication staff, but that we capitalize upon that and get this, get this out because I think it's extremely important. I did have a couple of um questions or observations. Um, maybe I can do a couple and see whether somebody else wants it. I do not have an exhaustive list, just, list, just so people know. Um, on your second slide, what is achievement? Um, I think it's good to note that uh, uh, that phrase, something accomplished is really important and it doesn't need superior, special or great. It's um, uh, and I forget the radio show they used to talk about it, where all the people are above average. Uh, but just ordinary, if you want ability, I shouldn't say just, but uh is really good. And that list, um, uh, is not an all-inclusive list. That, these are great examples of what we look at. So if I could go to um slide seven and uh on college enrollment and and I, I think the dashboard, um, one of my questions there, is that active now?
Yes, it is available.
Because when I hit the link, it didn't, but I think it was because it was within, it was embedded within the presentation tonight, so. Great, thank you. But that uh enrollment decrease between two thousand seven and twenty-twenty-one, I'm assuming, was it at the very end that we saw the decline? Uh, because those would be pandemic years, twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one. And I'm assuming that um, that's where we probably saw, right? I know there were declines in enrollments, or was it a steady decline?
I'd, I'd say it looked pretty steady, but at the same time, we're, we're slowly climbing out, so to speak, of COVID. I'm very curious about how that'll play out throughout time, yeah, in the future.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you want me to keep going?
Is, do any other board members have anything at the moment? No, not seeing anything. Go ahead, continue, Mr. Dorn.
Okay, um, on number eight, I just want to clarify that where you say Fairbanks College, Fairbanks uh several times, we're talking about that Fairbanks reference is to the FNS, ESD students, not UAF.
Correct.
Not the Fairbanks College, but.
Our Fairbanks High School graduates, as they go wherever they go. Right. Because they can be in Washington, they can be in Kentucky, they can be anywhere, right?
Right, okay, just wanted to make sure I had that right. Uh, and I'll add kudos. I'm glad that we are part of the National Student Clearinghouse. That's there. And on uh number nine, the uh, the asterisk about four-year open admissions institutions. NSC also has information for uh selective admission and so we can get that in terms of our students, how they're doing in those uh colleges or universities.
Yep, so um, for example, the, one of the references was the National Center for Education Statistics, where I got the national data, which is the same place that the UA system found it and referenced it. Uh, it, it can go into particulars, like you can say, okay, uh, you know, highly selective, like they only accept one to ten percent, you know, less selective, twenty-five percent. And there's data on all of that. And it has private institutions, public institutions. There's lots of data available there on that, that entire table that's provided by NCES.
Okay, great. That'd be an interesting piece to also see how they're doing in the selective. But I, but I understand the um, the open admissions comparing UA system with nationwide because UA is an open admissions. So the comparability I really like, but it would be there. Um, and the last thing I would uh think in terms of um, what you've done is a Yomen lift. And I remember one other attempt, probably twenty-five years ago, to try and that the district tried to get a handle on this, not as long. And, and I like the fact that you've um, have a better expansive, long-term perspective that you took on it. Um, but I understand what went into that and I can only imagine the extra pieces with, with this.
As, maybe I can interject for a second. I would like to express my thanks to Dr. Minert because Dr. Minert supported me in kind of doing my research projects and saying, this is going to take me some time. And he was very supportive of that and that matters. And yes, it takes a lot of, you just have to think about how am I going to do it and, and all that, yeah.
Yes, and so I will reaffirm and reiterate my thank you to you, you as superintendent uh for supporting of this because I think it's real important for us to know what our, how our kids are doing. Um, and so with that, um, just a thought in terms of when we look at employment, I have been impressed on just a small sampling of the number of Fairbanks School District uh graduates who are running their own businesses just within the state, but locally and statewide. I can only imagine there are more outside and I don't know whether we can really get a full handle on that. As you go through collecting those, um, also keeping an alert to those who are families, raising families, who may not be in one of these categories, but are contributing to our community uh or who are providing uh services to others, care services to others, that don't fall in that category. And it, you won't be able to track it all, but I think those are important things. I've met uh moms, dads on the playground who are concentrating on the stage in their life, post-graduation, taking care of their kids and um they don't fall in these other categories. But as you talk to people, you may find some information to help inform that. And uh just a piece that's um, uh, also important is the number of people, our graduates, who have sought elective office. Whether they were actually elected to a position or just ran as a candidate. Those contributions, that as we look at those big pictures, we recognize what our graduates are doing. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Uh, once again, thank you, Dr. Ott, for coming forward and doing this. And we know the testament to the space that Dr. Minert gives you because I can't tell you how many times this board asks for you to come and deliver information. We love it when you come. Um, is there anything further from any board members, Mrs. Dulean?
Yeah, I just want to, um, through the chair, uh, thank you, Mr. Dorn, for bringing up um Lake Wobegon, where all the children are above average. And I think, I think that with this report, we can probably say that Fairbanks North Starborough School District, where all the children are above average.
Thank you, Mrs. Dulean. Thank you, Dr. Ott. We hope you have a fantastic night and we look forward to the next time we see you. Morgan. With that, we will go into our board comments and we will start down here with Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. Okay, well, I took the opportunity earlier to say thank you and goodbye to Mrs. Hardy. Brandy, if you're listening, um, I hope that we uh will always remain friends. And I hope that you're settling into your new teaching position uh down in uh Washington. Apologies. Um, Al, so uh even though he's left already, I wanted to, to welcome Colonel Campbell to our dais. Good to, to have that representation. And happy first day of school. I just want to say I'm really grateful for all of our returning and new educators and staff showing up to do the hard work and to help our students grow into responsible adult citizens capable of navigating this world and their life and pursuing their dreams and graduating from college at really high rates. And uh I especially want to say thank you to Dr. Minert and the rest of the administration for not only having um the first day of school, but following that with a fairly long board meeting. Um, so thank you very much. This is a long day for all of you and I truly appreciate all the work that you all do to make this district successful. Um, I want to reiterate my thanks to Dr. Minert for sending out the communication um regarding our administrative regulations to ensure that staff and families understand the, the regulations and procedures related to immigration, customs enforcement or other federal non-emergency law enforcement. I would want to say, Ms. Maple and I worked on a resolution over the past several weeks to support our immigrants, families and staff with the intention of having it on the floor today. Um, and it would have been really nice to have seen that on tonight's agenda. Uh, that was not the will of the board. And I, I am disappointed by that. Um, I understand that there's no malintent in, in that. And that members of the board are trying to be cautious and deliberative, stick to past practices and so forth. But I do want to raise some points to consider in case we face any similar situations in the future. Um, and there is a time for that thoughtful deliberation. There is also a time, there are also times that call for swift and decisive action. And right now, the federal administration is conducting immigration raids around the country. The Department of Homeland Security uh rescinded a memo in January of this year. Or they, sorry, they, they created a memo rescinding the Protected Areas Enforcement Policy, uh, which included uh places like churches and schools, um, you know, preventing uh immigration enforcement for, in those locations. So by rescinding that memo, uh, or by rescinding that policy, rather, uh, basically opens up schools to raids by federal law enforcement. Uh, we are also seeing legal status and work, and uh work visas being arbitrarily revoked in some instances. Uh, there have been court rulings saying that some of that is illegal. And we have people being abducted off the street in our very town, very recently. Um, and down in Anchorage as well. This is all causing a climate of fear and suppression amongst our immigrant community and people of color, regardless of immigration status, because of the discriminatory, discriminatory practices that are being used to target people in raids. Things like uh targeting skin color, uh, speaking a different language or having an accent, those kinds of things. Again, federal. Again, federal courts are finding these to be discriminatory and therefore illegal, but it is still occurring. Ms. Maple and I were asked by an immigrant in this community to make a statement, and we worked on it as quickly as we could to develop something that could come before the board today with the intent of starting off the school year with a strong statement of support for vulnerable people in our community. This, again, this is a crisis. We are in a crisis right now, and it deserves swift and decisive action, not drawn-out deliberation. For those who aren't aware, we could have had this on our agenda tonight. Nothing in our policy prevents a resolution from going straight to a regular meeting agenda. And then we could have had the discussion tonight. We could have, as a board, revised the resolution with motions and amendments. We could have voted it up, we could have voted it down. We could also have voted to postpone the vote and send it to work session if we didn't think it was ready for a vote tonight. So it could have been on the table to discuss and then postponed for a work session if the board didn't like the content. But we didn't get that opportunity. Ms. Maple and I were trying to give the board an opportunity to take timely decisive action to react to a crisis. And instead of allowing that to happen, some members of this board decided that instead of taking these actions while families are worried and fearful, that we should take more time to talk about it more. And I do understand why, but I just want to say that that's got to feel frustrating to those people who are being targeted right now. People are under attack. They are reasonably scared, and while they are wondering what they are going to do when they might be abducted or separated from their families, we're nitpicking the details of what we should say about it and how we should say it. And I think what we should say is fairly clear. These federal immigration policies and crackdowns are immoral, unethical, and un-American. It should not be hard to say that in the face of such blatant discrimination and cruelty. If we expect other challenges to arise from this administration, we must be ready and willing to react as swiftly as they come. Again, I want to say that I am grateful for Dr. Minor putting out the information on our administrative regulations, and I'm grateful that the board supported that action. My disappointment is also somewhat tempered by the knowledge that other members encouraged and supported Dr. Minor sharing that information and intend to support the resolution eventually. But I do feel that by delaying this resolution, the board has already weakened the power of the statement. And it would have been more timely to have made this statement right now as school started. And with that in mind, I do hope that as we work through the resolution in the upcoming work session, that the work is focused on making the statement stronger, not weaker, not diluting things to appease people. So please, please, as we work through this resolution, find ways to make it stronger, to make it bolder. It's not the time to be timid in the face of oppression and discrimination. We need to come out strong and hard in support of our families, staff, and community members and to leave no doubt about the strength of our conviction to support them. Please avoid toning down language to make it more appealing to people who aren't being targeted. We should not worry about how comfortable we are with strong words when our immigrant community does not have the privilege to debate their own humanity. Board members, I am asking you to be brave, to be bold, be clear, and strong in upholding our values and our legal and moral commitment to our students, staff, families, and all the members of our community. And to that community, please understand that we are here for you. And even if it takes us time to figure out how to say it together, we do have your back. And I, for one, will be unwavering in my commitment to you and to protecting and supporting vulnerable people at every opportunity. Please hang in there and try to have a good school year. Get out there, into the schools, and help your students succeed. And I'll end there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Ms. Maple.
Happy first day of school. I, sorry, I made myself notes, but there are now many pages back from my notes during the day, or during the meeting. I also wanted to thank Dr. Minor and the administration for the email that went out. I have heard feedback on that from several people in the community and that we're really appreciative of that. So thank you. I also look forward to our work session next week and digging into the work that Bobby and myself and Dr. Minor did on our resolution. And I look forward to hearing what everybody else has to say about it and their feedback. I want to thank, I was at two schools today, my kids' schools, and I want to thank, I mean, everybody that's at the school and everybody that's behind the scenes. There are so many students in transition this year. There are so many students moving to new places, so many teachers moving to new places, principals moving to new places. And it takes every single adult in these buildings putting, you know, often all of their own feelings aside to create these really supportive environments for our kids. And I saw that firsthand today at both of my kids' schools. And I'm so grateful for everybody that is putting in the work to make all of these various transitions, whether it's from a school closure or, you know, moving out of a school to make room for kids from a school closure. There's just, yeah, there's just so much transition happening, and I am seeing so much support from every angle, and it makes me really proud to be a part of this community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maple. Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Thank you. So, welcome back, everyone. I'm going to take my glasses off, I cannot read with them on. I wanted to just give a special welcome to the new teachers that have their first day today and also to new district-wide staff. And I wanted to also welcome Colonel Campbell, but he is gone. It's exciting to start a new year, and starting a new year involves preparation, establishing routines and fostering a positive mindset for both students and parents. At home, key aspects including, include organizing school supplies, creating a study space, and developing consistent routines for sleep, meals, and homework. Having open communication with teachers, exploring extracurricular activities, and setting realistic goals that can also contribute to a successful start. School is exciting, and there's lots to do and lots of fun to be had. Another reminder, if you haven't signed up for your meal program, there is still time to submit a paper application or to go online to schoolcafe.com. I was honestly surprised at the ending balance for unpaid school meals last year at almost $80,000. I was even more surprised to learn that generous donations were made to significantly reduce that unpaid debt. So thank you to the people of Fairbanks. I am glad, though, that we've gone back to limiting unpaid lunches due to the unsustainability of that situation. But I'm even more thankful that we have a backup plan for any student who comes to school without money for breakfast or lunch. A big thank you to our school teams for keeping food pantries stocked and ready. I also appreciate the emails and the concerns that we've received about students who are in the situation, and it shows how just caring and thoughtful that our community is. If you would like to help, donations to nutrition services are always welcome, and you can choose a specific school or have your gifts spread across the district. And I would like to encourage our community to donate on behalf of students to cover the food cost. And most importantly, I also want to just reassure and restate that no child in our school district will go hungry. We have received several questions about the additional funds resulting from the override of the governor's veto. And since we don't yet have the 10-day count, we don't know that exact amount. But by our next meeting, we should be close, and hopefully we'll have a clearer picture of how much funding that actually entails. We've had requests to return staff to the Barnett Magnet School, which I thoroughly support, although I understand that there are other areas that need consideration. So we will have more concrete information, but know that we appreciate your emails and that we're hearing you. I do want to thank everyone for their emails, and we just really appreciate the wonderful support for our school district, the work that we're doing together, and most importantly, the support for our students and our staff. It is inspiring to see such strong community bonds and to share, and shared commitment, sorry, to education. And speaking of commitment to education, I do want to take a moment to give a huge thanks to Brandy Hardy for all the help that she gave to me. I got to sit by Brandy, and in my first meeting, I didn't even know how to turn on my computer. I didn't know where we were, I was lost, and she just scooped in, and she's got me all lined out. And she assisted me in a variety of ways, and she always gave me insight in areas that I did not consider. And her influence was very valuable to me, and I'm sure that her spirit remains strong and fiercely devoted to students and education. So thank you, Mrs. Hardy, I wish you all the best. Congratulations to our students of the Fairbanks North Starborough for having a higher college graduation rate than other students nationwide. I wasn't surprised, I'm just happy that it's in writing and that it's a tangible statement now. We are glad to be back, and we're looking forward to having a great school year. Thank you.
Mrs. Dullian.
Thank you. Yes, I first want to start by thanking Mr. Burgess and Mrs. Maple for drafting the resolution and putting that on the agenda because I think that without their advocacy, we wouldn't have had the swift, what I see as the swift action from our administration this week in sending that notice out in a, not only to our staff, but also to our families. What has resonated with me this week in regards to the resolution, and I'm glad that we have this on a working session next week, is the phrase, "Nothing about us without us." And that reflects on that, anytime that you're going to be doing something that impacts the lives of others, that you're not a part of that community, that you are working to gain that input and the consent to the extent possible. So I really appreciate that we are moving forward with this in a meaningful way that is allowing for those conversations with the community, community members whose lives would be impacted. So that's where my reservation about kind of doing something today came, resonated, is because I really reflected on that, that phrase again, which is, which is something that I stand firm to. But I look forward to discussing this, and I'm hopeful that we can agenda this in the next coming meetings. So, back to school. I am a parent of three elementary-age students who started a new school this year. I am also a parent of students whose school closed last year. So today was, so I'm speaking to parents and families who are experiencing similar things to me, regardless if it was a school closure, or a boundary line, or a new person to our community, a military family coming in, or you just moved here, or you, so any type of newness, or even a new kindergarten girl, which I have one. So today was a day that was filled with excitement and uneasiness. And I found a book by Corey Dorfield titled, "Goodbye Friend, Hello Friend", and it has helped my kids get ready for their new school today, and I thought it would help others in helping your own students as you embark on a new thing and changes. So I'm just going to quote a little bit from the book. "But sometimes when you least expect it, a goodbye comes along that really feels like the end. Sometimes goodbye is the last thing you want to say, like when goodbye to holding tight is hello to letting go. But no matter what, goodbye today is hello tomorrow because every goodbye leads to a hello. Every goodbye leads to a hello." So today, we just had our first day back to school, and I'm asking other families and other parents to ask your students, what hellos did they have today? Was it hello to a new classmate, a new playground, a new teacher, a new bus driver? Lean into those hellos and the possibilities, and perhaps maybe spend time there and choose to spend time in those hellos. And that's a choice that us adults and us parents have to make as we help our students navigate these changes. It's looking for the positives, and it's not to diminish that there can't also be sadness and grieving a loss, but helping students through by looking to the positives. And I want to talk about our educators and how incredibly wonderful they're doing, you know, in this regard. So my, one of my students today got a bag of candy, which he already ate, but the pencil's still there. And it said, "Welcome to our class. I'm so glad that you are here. Please enjoy this bag of goodies that describe our coming year. The eraser is to let you know it's okay to make mistakes. We will fix them and keep learning no matter what it takes. The smarties say, 'I know you're smart and really special, too. The lifesaver is a reminder that I'm always here for you. The pencil represents the learning that we are to do. The starburst is to let you know that you're a star to me.'" And then it says, "Second grade will be the best year yet, I'm sure you will agree." That educator didn't have to do that, but they made it feel like home for a student who was going through a process of, it's a new school, it's a new place. And they walked in, and I have heard stories like this from across our district. I've heard amazing stories of educators doing, going above and beyond at Tiquisic Brown and at North Polin Elementary, at Ann Ween, at Weller, at U Park. And I mentioned those schools because those schools took, have captured a lot of students from closures. And those educators stayed up until midnight, until 11:00. I saw them, they worked all weekend. We, as a, as an, so as a family, as a parent, I'm asking you to look for the hellos because when you model looking for the hellos, you help your students start moving towards the positive. And when you foster that positive growth, magic starts to happen. So, thank you to our educators, thank you to our families, and happy first day of school.
Mr. Dorn.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been a busy week. I want to start off in recognizing the, and thanking those who showed up for the positive picketing that's representative of a lot of different aspects of our community and being there to welcome teachers and other educational staff to the school year and at the opening sessions of the district last Wednesday. They were there early, and they cheered, and what I always love is people approaching and staff members approaching, and some of them are dancing their way in. You can see some of the smiles start quite a ways down into the parking lot. And then it's always fun to watch those who are coming in, and they're a little bit serious, and then the smile starts creeping across their face. And so thank you to those positive picketers who came to join there. And I want to say a thank you in terms of what was interesting with the professional development that day. The keynote speaker from Safe and Civil Schools, who actually has a long history. I knew the name was familiar, and I just couldn't place it for a while, and then it dawned on me, and especially when she made a comment that she first started working with our district in 2007 from the Safe and Civil Schools, and that I had the opportunity then to And that I had the opportunity then to attend the rest of the morning with her opening session with the high school staff and helping them with ideas, with refining, as well as I thought it was significant that she mentioned that many of the staff there will be validators. They know these are good practices, and they can affirm that for new teachers or other teachers who may need that little encouragement. But it was also wonderful to have a chance to look at the resource book that was made available to staff and see the development of those ideas, since I was, as a principal, part of the trainings way back when, and watch that development of good educational practices. Big thanks to all the staff today who showed up. Many continuing, some new to it, they've come to us, but to work with our children. And it was really noteworthy to see all the postings. I typically don't look that often at Facebook postings, but it was great to see the videos of staffs being creative and how they crafted a welcome message for students. Postings through, again, kudos to the district communication. They got them out on our district Facebook page, and I'm sure other areas. But also the postings from parents about their kids starting school, and appreciate the testimony earlier tonight, the public testimony regarding the many positive things that go on in our district. Do want to say thank you to our board president and our superintendent, or earlier, both of you had mentioned the budget considerations. I'm very mindful that when we talk about the override of the governor's veto, that was an increase of $20 per student. We had already baked in into our budget $680 per student of that $700 that the governor vetoed, or the money that the governor vetoed, so it's a small amount. I do appreciate that you have planned for a future piece to look at what those impacts are as we know a little bit more and what that money might be best used for, rather than jumping the gun, but that it's on our horizon. I appreciate the work session planned for next week, which will be both on continuation on policy and also to talk about the resolution mentioned earlier. I am mindful of, you know, as we start the new school year, and perhaps a suggestion is that we stay mindful and perhaps revisit at our next meeting just what our board norms are in terms of assuming that positive intent and of each board member and the other aspects of the board norms. They are before us, but sometimes they're easy to overlook, and that it might just be a nice way of affirming our board norms as we go forward. But I, lastly, just want to say thank you to the administration. I know many of you are out and about, visiting schools, popping in. I know, having been a principal for many years in this district, how important was, how night, just nice it was to have district administrators swing by. Sometimes it was just a couple of minutes, sometimes they hung out, but that does make a difference for our schools. And so, I want to appreciate all the efforts that you put into doing that and helping get this off to a great start, as well as the principals and their staffs and their PTAs or the parent groups that really helped with open houses or bits and pieces of stuff. So, just a lot of kudos that go around.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Thank you, board, for your work. We are now adjourned.